Let's get rolling. He'll log in in a minute.
Okay. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspaper, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would be taking place on Monday, February 7, via Zoom webinar at 7:00 PM. Amy Lawrence?
Here.
G O D Sharma?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Shanju Hargani?
Here.
Ashley Abigdor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Craig Plitner?
Here.
We sent two sets of minutes out last week, one set of minutes from November 15th and a set of minutes from December 6th. Hope to get them all.
So regarding the approval of minutes, the November 15th, 2021, any corrections or changes to that? Assuming everyone has reviewed them. Then in that case, can I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Move approval.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next up, we have the approval of the minutes for 12-621. Those were sent out this afternoon. Has everyone had time to review those or take a look at them?
Actually, I didn't realize that I had sent them last week. I recently.
Okay. I saw them come again, so.
Yeah.
Um.
I reviewed, I actually reviewed them and found a few minor typos which I responded to Eileen with. Nothing else. Nothing else.
Okay.
Okay, then, then do I have a motion to approve those minutes with the changes noted by Wolfgang?
I move approval.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, next up, we have two memorializations. The first one, calendar 38-2021, Peter and Erica K. at 17 Park Circle in Short Hills. Any changes or corrections to that memorialization? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Eligible on this are Craig, Steve Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe, Amy.
I move approval of the memorializing resolution for calendar number 38-20-21.
Thank you, a second?
A second. Amy, sorry.
Amy, on the second?
Second.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Joe Steinberg? Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Plitner?
Yes.
The record should reflect that Joe Steinberg is now with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, next up, your calendar 38-23-31, Stephen Gilman at 2 Troy Drive in Short Hills. Um, who's available on this one?
Um, G O D, Steve Wolfgang, Joe, Jessica, Craig.
Any changes or corrections on this memorialization? Then in that case, is one of those people to make a motion?
Sure, I move to calendar 38-20-21.
Second, Wolfgang on the second?
G O D Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Joe Steinberg?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Plitner?
Yes. Uh, Joe, we're getting a lot of feedback from your mic. Could you either turn it down or mute yourself?
Perfect.
Perfect. There we go. Thank you. Um, okay, so first up this evening, we have application calendar 38-33-21. Uh, Quinzhou, Wenzu, 15 Meadowbrook Road in Short Hills. Actually, it says Melbourne.
Yeah, that's nice thing.
But that's, yeah, it should be Short Hills.
Yeah.
So we can bring them over and if they have any questions this evening?
I brought the applicant over. I do think he's bringing his architect, but I do not know.
Yeah, it's, um, the architect.
Okay. Go ahead. If you, if you would both just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
You're muted.
There you go.
Yes, I do.
Okay, just one at a time, state your names and spell your names for the record, please.
Um, my name is Ching Zhao, Q I N G L A S T M Z H A O.
Yeah, I am Martha Victoria. I'm under Architect of Record.
Just spell your name.
M A R T H A V I C T O R I A.
Um, would you please give us your qualifications as an architect?
Uh, I have been licensed architect since 2012 in New Jersey. They, um, I have also been licensed in New Jersey State since 2009. Oh, I have been in good standing in both states. I have been working in, with my colleagues in, in New Jersey for about a year, a year and a half. Um, and I have around 18, 20 years, years of experience as an architect.
Have you been in front of any boards before?
I was in a chat on meeting for another two houses.
And where's your, and where's your education from?
Uh, Colombia. My bachelor is from Colombia.
Okay. Um, we will accept your qualifications, Mr. Zhao, if you would like to proceed. You're muted.
Yeah, first, I really appreciate the last times like because my first time, I didn't even know how this works out. So basically, I, I was giving the talk and it's like a not qualified. Um, so basically, um, I would like to add one room on my second floor with a bathroom because, uh, we are right now is like a family of six. Uh, we currently only have a two bathrooms and only three bathroom on the second floor and my other one is like 16 and the second one is a 10. Young girl will be teenager very soon. So basically, it's like a kind of difficult for us to, to leave, uh, right now, especially like I say, we have only three bedroom and the, and only one bathroom on the, on the second floor and otherwise like a far end with my parents here. Um, so, uh, would like to add the one on this, on the, right that we have existing on the first floor. So just build on top of it. And, um, yeah, that's, that's basically, um, our plan is.
Okay, so is your architect going to take us through the, uh, variants assault? Mr. Zhao?
Yeah.
Is, is your architect going to take us through the plan?
Yes, yeah, there will, yeah, there will.
Yes. So may I share the screen?
Absolutely.
Can I, can I just ask Mr. Chairman, if you can just get some clarification from the architect? I'm, I'm looking at the plans that were submitted with the application and it doesn't appear to have any type of signature block. And so I think we need some clarification as to who prepared the plans and when.
Point was, yeah, no one there and, and we asked King to do. Yeah, originally because they, when they give to me, changed the, the signature to my, to my name. I think we can use that, okay, like we give afterwards, like, uh.
I'm not understanding, Mr. Zhao. If you can just describe to us who prepared, if, whether you or your architect can testify as to who prepared the plans and, and when.
Yeah, it's my architecture, yeah, my architecture, MB Architecture, um, prepared this plan. Um, so would, um, I think, Martha, would you please explain to them?
Yeah, I did prepare the plans and the thing that was initially, he was going only for the variance. So he just asked me to provide side of block. But yes, I, I, I have my company set in New Jersey and, and we have all the business certification for the company. Uh, this is. So we prepared the plans. I did prepare the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, continue, please.
So let me show you my, the floor plan. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, so. Uh, this is the lot of the property, uh, that is showing here. Can you see the mound that I am pointing? Oh.
Yes.
Okay, so this is existing house and we are proposing a, the second story above the sustained first floor area. And, uh, a lot. I, I love that. I just want to show you, uh, let's see, this is the location of the, in, in the, in the block. Uh, it's located like in the middle of the, of, of this open space. Uh, this is two, two, two lines of, of, of houses like around, around the house. So how is this, the, the, the house located? Uh, the existing by now, uh, as you see, it's a living room, kitchen, dining, uh, dining area, family room, uh, this bedroom that is like a common area for the family and this bathroom that is a common bathroom. Uh, on floor and they have an existing bathroom that is shared only for these four bedrooms. Uh, they, as, as the owner is saying, uh, they, they, like as a family, they, they would like to have a master bedroom. And also because they has a big family. Uh, so that's how, how we came with the, the proposal of, of the master bedroom that is going to be above of the first floor. So it's not, not approaching any rear area. It's not. Uh, it, it, part is not a increasing the non-compliance. Uh, they have to the soil. There are so non-compliance. Uh, the lot area actually is, uh, is a small lot compared to the, to the other ones. Also, the width of the lot is wide. So in the, in this part is, is something that is, is making the, the, being the, the square footage less than it should be. Uh, but in the new proposals, we are not increasing any non-compliance. We are keeping all the, uh, existing non-compliance, but we are not doing any additional non-compliance. Uh, in the, for the side, side yards also, uh, the existing one is, uh, is less than the required, that is 82, but for the new proposal, uh, we are making it 82. So make it compliant. Going to the left side and into the right. Also, we are making it compliant, making this 82 away from the, uh, block nine. Um, so all the, uh, side combine height, all of these requirements, requirements are still on the, on the, um, the regulations. So the only part that we, we doing this variance is, is the floor area ratio. Um, and the only non-compliance that we are doing, but, uh, our, our point of, our point of view is that the house, uh, is not like a increasing or adding any overflooding of the, of the, of the neighborhood. How is the backyard of the house? Uh, what, what I showed you before, that the, the rear yard is, is looking to like the middle of all the, like an open area on the rear yard of the other houses. Um, let me show you a lot of pictures. Uh, for example, in here, this, that will be the second floor. So it will align with this existing second floor and with this second floor in the neighbors, this on the houses and most of their, all of them are two, set, two, two story. Show you more pictures of the, this is the, look into the right side neighbor. This is the, this is our house and this is the right side neighbor. And then that's.
I don't, I don't know if you're, you're showing, what we're seeing here is the survey and the zoning table. You may be referencing some other plan regarding neighbors. I'm not able to see that.
Oh. I, I was showing pictures.
Yeah, we're not seeing any pictures, ma'am.
Oh.
No, we're still looking at the survey, the survey.
Oh, yeah. Please, no. Oh.
While, while you're on this, while you're on this site plan, a quick second, um, you show us combined side yard setback variance required. But you also show you're improving the condition. How are you improving the condition?
For this one, the combined?
Combined side yard, not side yard setback, combined side yard setback.
But in this, do you have that in this table? I'm confused. I need to.
You want me to take this one, Craig?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, the, the, they're improving it, the existing, if you look at the right side yard, I think it's 6.93, which kind of dictates what you need to have on the left side. Their current condition, I think, is 30, they have 6.95 and, uh,
oh, yeah.
So they're currently at, I want to say 30.2. The new addition is going to be at 10.82 plus the 6.93. So it results in like a 32 point.
Yeah.
It's not, yeah, it still doesn't mean 35%.
Right.
Oh, okay, but that's in relation to this one, like, yeah, they combine. 35% of 55. It plus 1925.
This thing doesn't comply, but.
This is not the requirement, the 1925.
Existing. But new on company.
Right, you, your side yard combined there, you're showing you're in compliance, but you're not in compliance.
Oh, this, the system is not compliant.
Your existing is not compliant, but improving the condition slightly. But you're still, you still need a variance for the 2.8%. You haven't spoken to that application, that, that, that variance. I mean, our, our town, our secretary did, but you haven't addressed the positive or negative criteria of that.
Oh.
That's why.
So I, I don't understand that. This is how we calculate 55, the 35% of 55 and 55 pounds because of the.
Yeah, I, I don't know who's speaking there.
I hear multiple people too, so.
Yes, I am with my colleagues here, so we work together.
If, if your colleague is going to be providing testimony, he or she needs to be sworn in and to be visible on the screen. So to be seen by the board members and members of the public. If, if you're going to, they can, your colleague can help you, show you certain documents, but cannot say anything because it's not part of the record, is sworn testimony.
Okay. So can I introduce them?
Sure.
Okay. So I have, I guess. I have Viviana with me. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, I have a background. Yes. Close. About one, 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 two. Oh.
You take some?
Hi.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on a second. Hold on a second.
Hold on. Can you, first of all, Eric, let's, uh, let's get this person sworn.
Yeah. Are, are you able to remove your mask?
Yes.
Okay, if you would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I need you to state your name, spelling for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Viviana Costa and I think I worked in New Jersey for 20 years and I'm part of Martha's team.
You're, you're very difficult to, wait, wait, wait. Yeah, you're very difficult to hear and understand. You're not coming in very clear at all. Just spell your last name first.
Okay, it's C O S T A.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so tell me your qualifications.
Okay, I'm, I'm an architect. I've been working in New Jersey for 15 years and I'm part of Martha's team and the architecture.
Okay, are you, are you certified? You carry a license?
I don't have a license.
Okay, then you can't talk here.
Okay, so.
So, so.
I'm the project manager. So.
I understand that, but, but if you're not, if you're not licensed in architecture, you cannot appear before this board.
Okay, okay, I understand that. So she will take the chair. Okay. Okay, good night.
All right, so we're still on this combined side yard setback. So if you can describe for us what the deviation is and why you believe that relief from this board is justified for that deviation.
Okay, so. Um, as you said, because I am doing the calculation with the 55 that is existing.
Can you raise your volume a little bit, ma'am? I can barely hear you. I don't know if other board members.
I just want to, uh, the deviation would be because of these five difference here. That I did the calculation with that. Can you hear me?
Yep, I hear you. But anything irregular about the property in nature?
Yes, the lot size is very irregular. And also the size of the lot is small compared to the, the, what is supposed to be required.
So you're saying, so they're saying a lot area is, is below the zone requirement, correct?
Yes.
Right, by like 520 feet, something like that?
Oh, I think it's more like.
Oh, no, sorry, about 800 feet, 720 feet.
Yeah.
Okay. After a lot with also is not compliant, correct?
Yes, the average that we have is 55. So.
Are your current side yards compliant?
Uh, they call it no. This one into the writings is not compliant.
So that, so that would be just a pre-existing condition, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We exist in non-compliant. And also the, the all that sign yard is not compliant or one, I see. Uh, but that's why we propose to make it compliant with the new addition. So.
What, more in compliant or is it completely compliant?
It's completely compliant.
Are you sure about that? Because you're asking for a variance in regards to your side yard setback, combined side yard of 2.8%. So you're improving the condition, but not completely making it go away, correct?
Oh. So I, I think it's improving the foundation.
Well, if you go up one more, right side yard, principal building, see how that 6.93 is non-conforming?
Yes.
You think that contributes to some of the problem?
Yeah, because this was a twisting, so it's very easy. From the beginning was not compliant, yes.
Okay.
But this is existing.
Right, so let's jump to the floor area ratio request. What could you tell us about that?
All that I am doing a little, like, uh, that requires 36%, I am going over like 6% more. Uh, because if I go only to comply with the 1900s, it would give me only 70 square feet. That is not going to allow me a, a master bedroom. So.
So why don't you pull up the draw, let's pull up the drawings of that master bedroom real quick, if you could. I think that's, again, the new proposed one. Yeah, why don't you zoom in on that? So, so if it was to comply, what would this room look like?
No. Okay, yes, if, if we only will have 70 square feet if we are going to comply. So with seven, with 70, I'm sorry, with 70 square feet, I'm sorry.
So, so very difficult to build a room with 70 square feet, correct?
70 square feet, yes, it's not, it's not enough to, to build a bathroom and a master bedroom, not even a bedroom.
Okay. Okay. So you so you feel that this would be sufficient and you don't feel it would be oversized to build a room this size on back of the house?
No, I think, yes, it's not oversized and it's not going to like damage the, the neighborhood image or uh, and it's going to integrate with the neighborhood because all the houses around the area are are bigger houses.
Is this, is this addition visible from the front of the house?
No, it's not visible from the front of the house. Unfortunately, I didn't see my pictures, but uh, the front of the house and you will be, will be seeing the, the same house from the.
Right.
From the elevation. And we are going to keep the, the same height in the back with this twisting height, so it's not going to be that's something that is is going to like a determine it to the, to the neighborhood.
So when your proposed left side elevation, did you step back that, that facade to decrease the massing on the side of the building?
Yes, this part.
Right.
To make, to make the side yard compliant. Because right now, if I put this line, it will be again non-compliant.
Okay. Anything else for the board? Do you have anything else you'd like to present?
Oh, no. No, that's everything I, I unfortunately, I must see the pictures, I was going to show you the picture.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't make that out, what was your?
Oh, I, I, you couldn't see my, the pictures, I wanted to show you how, how are the, the neighbors and.
Okay, but you, but we haven't been able to see those pictures, so any way to pull those up or no?
Oh.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. Okay, you cannot see anything?
No, we're currently, we're just, we're currently looking at the elevations.
Okay, let me see if I stop sharing or maybe do it again. Can you see it now?
Yeah, so, hold, hold on a second, so are you show, you're going to show what, a series of photographs?
Yes.
Right, and, and those photographs have not yet been presented to the board, correct?
Uh, no.
Right, so how many photographs are you going to show?
Oh, let me see.
Approximately.
Oh. Eight?
Eight, okay, so we're going to mark as A1 a series of eight photographs, did you take those photographs?
Yes, with the owner.
With the owner, and how long ago were these photographs taken?
Um, past weekend, uh, two weekends ago.
About, about two weeks ago?
Yes, oh. Oh. About two weeks, I don't know, two weeks, oh.
Okay, so why don't you go, I'm sorry?
Yes, about three weeks, something like that, I.
All right, so about 21 days ago, so and, and these photographs that you're going to show us accurately depict what you saw at the time it took the photographs?
Yes.
All right, so why don't you go through them?
Okay, let me see, so this is the back of the house. Uh, this is where the new extension is going, uh, we are, we are proposing in this part of the house. Uh, it's going to align the, the height of this, the whole stories in the same house. I want to show it to you that this house, uh, to the left side is also the stories house, and also the ones to the right side is the stories house. Oh. Oh. This is the neighbor to the right side, can you see this picture?
Yes.
Okay. This is the neighbor to the right side, oh. The to the back, the ceiling, the back of the house, this is where it's going to be the, the proposed second the master bedroom is on both of this floor. Oh.
Okay, do you have another photo?
Yes. The right side neighbor.
We're not able to see any photo other than the first photo.
Oh. I guess I got it. I'm checking. Can you see this one?
Well, I mean, we're, we're seeing a photo board with, with small photos. Are you able to click on any of those photos so to enlarge them so the board and members of the public can see them?
Can you see it now, I always feel the same, no.
It's not enlarging.
It's something with the the screen, trying to screen. How about now?
There you go.
And then neighbors to the right of the house. They, we are done. Oh, this is what I was mentioning to you, that the, the house in the, we have part of for an open area. So nothing happening in the, in the back of the house. Oh. I don't know.
We can understand you, could you please speak out and more clearly?
Oh, I don't know, I'm trying to, this is the house and these are the neighbors. Where is the whole?
Ma'am, ma'am, you're, you're, we cannot make out what, what you're saying, can you raise your volume a little bit?
Is the, the house?
That's better, thank you.
Oh. Are the neighbors' house, this part, I was mentioning to you that the back of the house is looking to this open area. So, uh, on the side, the get to the left, this house is very to the front, so this part is not is not even involving anything to them, like it's not interfering with anything to this, the left label, uh, the one to the right. They also have a, an open area here, so not like a a covering or a hiding anything to this existing label. Uh, I just want to show you the the physical layout of the house compared to the all the houses around them.
Okay.
And here also, you can see the square footage that most of the houses just get a little bigger than this one. And, and that's it, that's what I have.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for the architect? Does anyone in the audience have any questions for the architect or the applicant? I don't see any hands. Then I will close the public portion of the meeting, um, board members, what comments do you have?
Can I just say something before we continue? Just to remind, just to remind the board that with regard to this application, um, we're dealing with a combined side yard setback variance, uh, I, I assume pursuant to, uh, C1 because it's an undersized lot and deficient lot width. And then also, um, they require a 70D for FAR variance, it requires five affirmative votes out of seven, and as the board is aware, um, that the question there is whether the positive and negative criteria have met, have been met, whereby the site you believe will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed use that has a larger floor area than permitted by ordinance. And obviously, that requires a showing of the positive criteria, special reasons, and also the negative criteria that you're familiar with from, um, not only other FAR applications, but also, um, the C criteria as well, a substantial detriment to the neighborhood and whether there's no substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And, you know, therefore, whether, um, the application presents an appropriate plan, uh, given the neighborhood.
Thank you, Rob. So who would like to comment first?
I'll, I'll start off. Um, so as Rob said, we're, we're dealing with an undersized lot, an irregular shaped lot. Um, we've got the combined side yard setback, which is basically a pre-existing, non-conforming condition, and it's actually being made slightly better with the, um, with the proposed plan. Um, in terms of the floor area ratio, I think that, um, that it meets the, the prongs for, uh, the variance, um, I think that the site can accommodate it, I don't think it can be a detriment to the neighborhood, it's in the back of the house, it's filling in an area that, um, I think can easily be filled in without, um, you know, having any negative impact on the residential homes. Um, and I take full responsibility to support the application.
Thank you, Jessica. Anyone else would like to comment on this application? Go ahead, Joe, because we're getting a ton of feedback. Thank you, Chandra, you were saying something?
Uh, sure, I think Jessica laid it out well. Uh, there's clearly a case of hardship, given that, uh, uh, the zone itself has a 6,000 square foot, uh, uh, required, normal size, and this is even lower than that, and on top of that, uh, when they create that additional space which they need, as the owner mentioned, uh, for the needs of their family, uh, they can come up with only 70 square feet, if I got that right, that may, you know, may not be sufficient in terms of what they're looking for. And for all the reasons that Jessica laid out, uh, I think there is a case, uh, for this where I could be supportive of.
Thank you, anyone else would like to comment? Folks, we got a D variance here, I'd like to hear more than two people.
So, um, a question here, are we going to split it into two separate votes or is it going to be?
Okay, we'll split it into two.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comments regarding this application?
I'm in great troubles by the fact that we were told there were eight photographs and we saw one.
Okay. Um. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree with, uh, Jessica and, uh, Chandra, you know, when you, when you visit the, the property, it's, uh, it's kind of a creative solution, you know, for a house that I think needs modernization and expansion, I'll, I'll be candid with you, I'm less than enthusiastic about the presentation, um. I mean, there was enough information, I think, provided to us through the documentation and onsite visits that we could be comfortable with voting, but I thought that the, the presentation by the architect was, um, uh, in some respects confusing, so, but I, but I can support the application.
So, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Steve just said, I could, the, the, the presentation, the application was, was very hard to understand and get my head around, but I think the, the overall, uh, plan that's, that's put forth, uh, for the side yard setback is understandable based on the lots' conditions. And the home, because they're being, filling in the back corner, other rear, rear, rear facade, filling it in, it can accommodate that massing and sort of staying within the house's structure. So I don't feel that, yeah, it would be too much, also it's not visible from the street. So I too would support this application. Uh, knowing what you heard so far, Mr. Zhao, would you like to move forward with a vote on your D variances and C variances?
Yes, please.
Okay, then I would ask the board for a motion on the D variance for floor area ratio.
So, approval of the D variance on floor area ratio?
Thanks, Steve, can I have a second?
Second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Will Fang to Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Craig Plitner?
Yes. Next, we have the C variances for a combined side yard setback, can I have a motion on that variance?
Move approval for the C variances.
Thank you, Jessica, Wolfgang on the second. Go ahead, Eileen.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Will Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang to Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Craig Plitner?
Yes. Good luck with the project, Mr. Zhao.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have calendar 38, 34, 21, Jacqueline Stein, 37 Keen Road, Short Hills. Mrs. Stein, how are you?
I'm well, good evening, how are you?
Is there anyone available with you tonight?
Yes, uh, we have Mr. Rich Keller, uh, Mr. Vincent Verderamo. Vincent, okay, and Richard Keller. Okay, all right, they're both on their way.
Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Jim.
Eric?
He's your attorney, so he doesn't get sworn. You want me to swear, Mr. Keller? I will swear, Mr. Keller, now, uh, do you swear from testimony you are about to give in the Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold truth, not for the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Richard Keller, K.E.L.L.E.R.
Hey, Mr. Underamo, throw it over to you.
Uh, thank you, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening on behalf of Jacqueline Stein and her application, uh, at 37 Keen Road, um, as you can see from the, um, the papers that were filed.
Hang on one second, are you with CRV board?
Yeah, I just see that there's a hand raised.
Hand raised, they're not part of your application?
No.
Okay. Okay. Continue.
I don't know what they're. Okay, so this is an accessory use of a shed in the backyard of the house that's being used as a home workspace. And we're looking for some C variances, bulk variances to accommodate that. The shed is eight feet from the property line when it requires 12, but that is in the same place where the prior shed was at. So I'm going to put our testimony of Mr. Keller. We'll explain the full scope and breadth of the project and where, and where, and where it does not comply at the moment and why we need the variances. So Mr. Keller, and I offer Mr. Keller as an expert. I think the board's familiar with Mr. Keller. And I'd ask that we waive the curriculum in the interest of time and that the board accept him as my expert.
I agree. So continue on.
Mr. Keller, can you kindly describe the project for the board?
Good evening. Um, just for the, I'm going to introduce the plan that was provided to the board. However, I'm going to mark it as an exhibit because it has some additional annotations that were added to the drawing by Virchill Landscaping, Barry Greenberg. So if I can share.
Mr. Verderamo, before we continue, if we can just have clarification, while we're familiar certainly with Mr. Keller's credentials, which have been stated to this board on many, many an occasion. Are you presenting him this evening as both an engineering witness and a planning witness?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Mr. Keller, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. The, I'm going to share my screen. And I trust everyone can see the, the screen.
So we're going to, we're going to mark this as A1?
That's correct. This would be A1. This is, it is basically the, the plan that was submitted. However, it does contain the annotations that were put on by Virchill Landscaping, Barry Greenberg, licensed landscape architect, and it is dated December 22, 2021. And other than the landscaping and landscaping note, it is identical to what the board had submitted, was submitted as part of its package. The.
I noticed in my package, there is another A1.
Well, that would be the, that would be the architect's drawing A1. So that's the way the, that stands for architecture. In this particular case, the exhibit would be called applicants A1.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. The, the property itself is located on the north side of Keen Road. It is designated as 37 Keen Road, is block 4305 and lot six. It is 22,982 square foot property that's located wholly within the R4 residential zone. The property is approximately 200 feet deep by 115 feet wide. The, the applicant Jackie, Jacqueline Stein, along with her husband, moved into the property in 2019. And time, it was occupied by a pool, which is the irregular shape amoeba sort of decking, a shed at the rear, sink, a two-story, single-family dwelling with a wood deck, circular driveway and driveway on the left side, along with some additional pavement that wrapped around the property on the right side. Up until the pandemic, Jackie, who works in the healthcare sector, had an office in the East Orange General Hospital. And starting with the pandemic, she was actually permanently displaced from her office. So that office will not become available to her again. So with a then one-year, one-year-old child and pregnant, she began working from home like many of the people during the pandemic. Those of you who've been to the site will recognize that their home itself is a modern style house. It has a, obviously not everyone got to go inside of it, but it has a number of large double-height spaces, including a 16-foot diameter skylight that brings light from the rooftop all the way down to the first floor. It's a largely open plan. It's more similar to what you might see on television as a Hampton-style house. But isn't that modern vernacular? The quirky thing about that vernacular is it does two things. It has actually far less square footage or usable square footage in the house than the footprint might suggest. And it also offers very little flexibility in creating new private spaces that could be converted into a viable workspace. You've got a big double-height space. It's hard to carve out a separate enclosed office within that. The couple now with the two-year-old and a four-month-old baby with special needs and their elderly in-laws living with them, Jackie sought to find a viable solution. And with little or no ability to expand within the home and the needs for therapists, et cetera, with their, with their new baby, there just wasn't any space within the building to, to create an office. So the, they turned to the backyard where space already existed, although it needed significant improvement. Yeah, the purpose of this application tonight is to convert what was an existing rear yard shed into a quiet and confidential space that can be used as a home office. I would point out, this is not going to be a commercial office space. It isn't. There are no other employees. There are no other workers that will be on site. There will be no visitors, no guests. When pandemic starts to ease more, Jackie will be traveling to hospitals around the country, but no one will come to this site. There'll be not be any visitors, no guests, no shipping or receiving of inventory, et cetera. And I would also point out that home offices and studies are uses that are customary, incidental and subordinate to residential uses. And that's even before the work-from-home paradigm shift that was brought up out by, by COVID. I would point out, all over town, I have clients that have pool houses that became offices and home workspaces during the pandemic, and they remain so today. Given the immediacy of the owner's needs during the early stages of the pandemic, unfortunately, the owners wrongfully assumed they could convert the space without the need for variance. Once they submitted to the, to the township for permits, they were flagged by the zoning officer since the accessory structure in the back was not 12 feet off the property line, as is required by ordinance. The main frame body of the shed that's there today is actually 9.8 feet off the rear line, 8.6 to the other portion of the enclosed, and the cantilever section is only eight feet from the rear property line, again, where 12 feet is required. So that's where we started. And that's, and that's where they, when they submitted, that was the original notice of deviation from the zoning officer. We then, our firm was engaged to analyze the existing survey and assist in putting together the variance application. And that's when we identified that the existing property was actually already over, largely because of front yard pavement and a large driveway. They were actually already over on building coverage, lot coverage, and accessory coverage. Again, because this little section in the back is covered, the entire area building coverage with the shed exceeded the allowable building coverage. So the plot thickened in a sense. And so then we began to review the existing inventory of accessory structures and impervious surfaces to see what we could remove, either eliminate some of the variance relief requested or reduce the scope of that. I also will, just before I go on to the extent of the variance relief requested, I will actually show a, an exhibit A2. And this would be, hold on, let me try and get it up there. There we go. If I can get that up there. This is a photo exhibit, which we're going to label A2. It's annotated site and landscape photos for the Stein application, except as noted, the photographs were taken by myself yesterday, February 6. And they do accurately represent the site as it exists today. This is the.
How many are we looking at, Rich?
Actually, there are three, three photographs of the site and one photograph of typical landscape materials.
Thank you.
The photograph number one is 37 Keen Road. This is looking at the backyard. That's the structure. Jackie's husband spares no expense on her, so he certainly did a first-class job in improving the structure. It's got, it's, it's got non-operable windows in the back and side doors. It's like to the front. The product, the structure is approximately on the high side, about 11 feet to the underside of the structure, just about 12 feet to the top. And on the low side, it's about 13 foot, two inches or so. I would point out that accessory structures in the R4 zone, when they are 12 feet off, can be as high as 18 feet. So if this house, if this structure were pulled four feet further from the neighboring properties behind on Winthrop, it could actually be five feet taller and fully comply with the ordinance. The second photograph shows you the side of that structure. And the applicant was very careful to place high windows in the back so that when Jackie is seated, no one can look in and see her, the neighboring behind at 52 Winthrop, can't see into her. She looks above the house and sees only trees. The photograph number three is the existing landscape screening along the, along the rear property line. So Winthrop is on the left, the structure is on the right. We're looking to the east along that property line. The, the main structure is between 8.6 and 9.8 feet off the line. I would point out that right at this point where the fence comes in from the neighboring property that divides 52 and 48 Winthrop, the retaining wall is approximately four feet on the, three feet on the property line. I'll clarify that in a minute. And then it continues to go to up to four feet off the line. So this area at the bottom of the wall here, at least three, between three and four feet of that is actually part of the subject property. And that is the place where when I return to the, to the landscape plan, that's the place where we're looking at supplementing the existing high-branched evergreens with a basically a wall of eight to 10-foot arborvitae that'll further screen and provide infill down low. So the tall trees will remain, provide screening from the second floor, looking down from Winthrop towards us. And then the, the eight to 10 arborvitae, which grow about a one to two foot per year, will actually fill in below that. The, just some examples of arborvitae, they can either be left to grow in a, in a more pear-shaped, or they can actually be let to grow together and maintained as a hedge. And they do grow rather quickly, as I said, one to two feet per year. So that's the type of landscaping. I think on Mr. Greenberg's plan, he proposed strategically placing six arborvitae, eight to 10 feet in height along that common border. And that was shown on. Go back to A1, six-foot arborvitae green giants, eight to 10 feet planted between the property line and retaining wall. All plants in the way will be removed to make new for new plantings. There's some scrubby stuff down low. There's some branches that will be removed that are not evergreen. They're just, they're, they're have very few needles. They would be removed so that you get the lower, lower screen planting in front of or intermixed with the existing trees. Since we didn't do this survey, the survey was not a topographic survey, so none of the existing trees were shown. But as shown from the photograph number three in packet A2, there are existing evergreen trees that are just along that border. The, if I go to the, as part of, this is part of your application. This is the variance attachment E. And so again, since we didn't prepare a site plan, we would normally have us on our site plan. But since we're just, we're assisting at this point, we're looking to the zoning calculation form E just to review the, the, the variance relief required. As indicated, there's an existing building coverage variance that we're not exacerbating. That existing building is over, the combination of buildings is over about 590 square feet. There's no change to that. We're looking at keeping that same. So it's an existing non-conforming condition with no change. With regard to the lot coverage, we did look at areas we could reduce coverage, and we saw that we could take out 2,556 square feet of coverage. I'll go back to where that is in a second. So whereas the existing site is allowed 35% coverage or 8,000 square feet, the existing site is 46.55, so it's over by 2,556. We are reducing that by 1,593 square feet to bring that into 39.62%. So we still need a deviation of, of over 4%. We're still over by 1,000 square feet on the lot coverage. But largely that's created in that, that's created by coverage in the front and side yard. That's never perceived up from the rear yard. As indicated, we need a variance for the accessory setback where eight feet exists at its nominal dimension, and that goes up to 8.6 and 9.8 feet. But eight foot is no change, and the ordinance requires 12, so that's a deviation of four feet. With regard to accessory coverage, the property was over on accessory coverage where it was up at 27.79% of the rear yard was as accessory where 20% is permitted. We've actually reduced that by 1,070 square, six square feet of largely decking around the pool. And that means that we've actually now eliminated that variance. So we've gone from 27.79 down to 18.45. So we're actually under what's permitted by code. I would point out on the, on the other parts of the application that we submitted, the site is well under on floor area ratio, and it is well under, is well over on the rear yard unoccupied. Rear yard unoccupied, 25% of the total lot area has to be behind the house and unoccupied. In the proposed condition, we have nearly 40% of the lot. So it's certainly not an overdevelopment of the backyard. We have a large rear yard with, with the appropriate amount of accessory stuff in it. And it actually exceeds the required rear yard area by a considerable amount. Right? Delete that and go back to the plan. You can see that we've eliminated existing paper walkway in the front that is not accessory. It's just coverage that goes all the way into the back. And we've eliminated both a paper pad in the back, concrete pad in the back. We've taken off that amoeba shape to significantly reduce the, the coverage on the property and bring the accessory coverage into a compliant condition. And with that elimination of 2,556 square feet, we're also significantly reducing the amount of runoff, stormwater runoff that will be going towards the neighbors, since we have less impervious, therefore less runoff. If we, if we talk about the, the variances. Yep, obviously, if we were constructing and exist, a new house on this property, we could certainly design a house that would be fully compliant with the zone and accommodate Jackie's extended family. There's special needs child and reasonable home offices for the family. However, we're not. We're starting with an existing dwelling that is somewhat unique in its modern style. And it's almost, as they said, Hampton-style with double-height spaces. And it's almost nearly impossible to put anything into that without either destroying the aesthetic integrity of the space or just creating spaces that just quite frankly wouldn't work. All of the available rooms within the house are actually unfortunately taken between extended family and the needs of their children and family. As I indicated, this style of home produces a much smaller amount of floor area and number of rooms than, than its coverage would imply. And an external addition is not, not possible without exacerbating an existing coverage deviation. More importantly, there's an opportunity here to allow for the variance relief request. It will actually bring the site closer into compliance with the existing ordinance. And I would point out that that certainly, I can stop sharing for a second. That certainly advances the first purposes of zoning under section 4055 D2 of municipal land you saw, that's general welfare. And the ability to supplement the tall evergreen screening with eight to 10-foot tall arborvitae also advances the aesthetics of the neighborhood and mitigates against any negative impact. That's section I under 4055 D2. Obviously, no variance can be granted without showing there's no substantial detriment to the public good, and there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The structure cannot be seen from Winthrop Road or Keen Road. Clearly, as was shown on the photos, there is some partial visibility from 52 Winthrop behind, but that can be mitigated through the addition of supplemental landscaping that will fill in low areas while the upper evergreens continue to, to block the upper portions. The from the, from the neighbors to the side and rear, including those at 58 and 42, 52 and 48 Winthrop, the deviations in the building coverage cannot actually be perceived. The rear yard, that's reduced coverage is actually underdeveloped by ordinance. The, the 14-point, 18.45 accessory coverage where 20% is permitted is now under by 179 square feet. And we've reduced the amount of total coverage by more than 3,500 square feet in total. The proposed landscape will supplement the existing large evergreen trees and block views. The habitable structure is approximately 11 feet above grade, as I indicated. An accessory structure that would be 12 feet off the property could be as high as 18 feet off the grade, 23 from the lowest point to the highest point, which means an accessory structure at 12 feet off could be five to six feet higher than the current structure. We would maintain that with the landscaping, this is a far less impactful option. The, we're certainly less visible when, when landscaped appropriately. The, it's also more easily and more immediately screened because it's lower. Further mitigating, further mitigating, excuse me, against any of the impacts on the neighbors would be that there are no, as I indicated, there are no operable windows on the, along the rear of the structure with all walls insulated, which didn't sound. There'll be baseboard heat, so there's no furnace. The windows were placed up high in the rear so, so that. The windows were placed up high in the rear so so that both Jackie can't see the adjoining home and they can't see him. Again, this is not a a pool cabana with open sides and a TV on it, it's not a hobby or I've I've designed art studios where I have clients that do woodworking at night or they do welding at night in an art studio. This generates none of that sort of noise that you could normally get in a structure that was that was twelve feet off. We're agreeing that we will keep this structure with its permanent windows with the landscaping that'll be maintained. And of course, we would guarantee that for a minimum of three years. That generally generally if plants don't take within two years, they need to be replaced and we certainly do that. The the site is being the benefits is the site is being closer into performance with lot building coverage. It is, we are eliminating the accessory coverage. Even though so certainly the perception from the neighbors is that we have an oversized lot with the appropriate amount of accessory coverage. There's an environmental benefit and a net reduction of stormwater runoff resulting in the net decrease of sixteen hundred square feet even previous cover. I think I said thirty five hundred square feet before, I think I was wrong, I think it's sixteen hundred square feet of impervious coverage in the rear and I think it was total of just go back to it so the record is clear. Yeah, we were eliminating a total of twenty six hundred and fifty six square feet. Now we're twenty no, we're twenty six fifty, so we're we're reducing fifteen hundred and ninety four fifteen hundred and ninety three square feet in total, which definitely will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff. And roof water from the structure can also be routed to a dry well to further reduce stormwater runoff. We if this were to approve this, in addition to building permits and inspections, we would also need to file for a grading permit through the through the engineering department, which we would happily do. And they would make sure that we even further mitigate against any any run on. And our town ordinance in terms of stormwater management does not let you just the fact that we're reducing the net square footage doesn't matter, you you detain for the amount of roof area, so we would be further reducing that runoff as a as a function of any approval and subsequent grading plan that would be required. We feel that the the design of the office combined with the low intensity nature quiet use will not have any negative impact on the neighborhood. We feel that the benefits of bringing the site closer into performance with the zoning ordinance and the addition of landscape buffering outweighs any potential negative impacts. And we hope that you'll approve it and we're certainly open to any suggestions or reasonable conditions that the board might want to put on this to to improve that balance of what we think already benefits that outweigh any difference.
Thank you. Any questions from from the board for Mr. Keller?
I do. So Richard, I just want to understand, there is plumbing and electrical in the building, right?
Yeah, they back when the building department was semi-open, they just sort of went to town and there is a I don't think there's any plumbing in it, but there is electrical in it. I don't think there's any plan for plumbing in it, but there is electrical in it. And let me just double check the
Because the my my question really centers around the the characterization of this building as a shed. I guess that's where I'm kind of struggling because it's not a shed.
Well, it's not a shed anymore, that's where it started. And as I said, it 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 certainly morphed. It got taller, it kept the same square foot pad that it was on, but it got a lot beefier and there is no plumbing proposed. We submitted architectures, which are part of your package, there's no plumbing, there is electrical out there.
But you said it's gonna have a ready ready baseboard heating.
Yeah, there'll be electric heating, so there'll be electric out there, there'll be heating, but no furnace.
Okay, thank you.
Robbie, you had a question?
I I just want to get some clarification. So my, Mr. Keller, i- is it fair to state that other than the applicant, no one else is going to be working there, meaning there's there's not going to be an intention to have any client meetings?
That was actually my testimony and Jackie, Jackel and Stein is available to corroborate that. But in our discussions, there will never be anyone visiting the site, any guests, any associates, no coworkers, no one will come to the site, it's a private workspace. As though we're in the house, it's just there wasn't place to put it in the house.
And and just to clarify, there'll be no deliveries separate and apart from typical deliveries to single family home?
Exactly, correct.
And you know, I with there being a pool pool there, is this going to be functioning in any way, shape or form as a pool house?
It's not, it's not intended to Jackie works full time and she'll continue to work out of that space, but and it's not been set up to, there's no bathroom, usually you would see a changing space, a shower space. None of those amenities, there's no plumbing on the site. It's strictly intended to be an office and unfortunately, when Jackie has to use the bathroom, she's got to hustle back to the house and use the the main bathroom. So it's really meant to be a quiet contemplative space. Right now Jackie's been using the kitchen table, probably violates HIPAA rules by having information spread all over amongst the kids' homework. So it's the opportunity to create a lockable space where Jackie can leave her papers out, lock up, go back to being a mom. And the next morning come back out and use it the same way we use our dens and our studies and our our home offices now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Amy, you had a question?
Yeah, just one i- in response to Steve's question, you said that this new structure is beefier, larger than than the shed that was there previously and taller. Can you speak to that at all, like? How much, what changes there in the size of the structure compared to what used to be there?
Yeah, the you know that? Yeah, the walls went from three inches thick to being about six inches thick. They sit on the same concrete pad, but the walls got thicker, obviously. And it did get taller than what was there before, just to allow for more headroom, we get those windows up high. So it'll be a little more light in every space, but again, well under the under the permitted eighteen foot.
No, under, do you know how much taller it is than what was there by any chance?
No, I I Jackie may know, I I suspect the old was probably about seven to eight feet and the new one, and I don't know the exact roof style on it, but currently the one is about thirteen and it's a it's a flat slightly sloping with the slightly lower part facing the neighbors to the north and the slightly higher part facing the house.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there any particular reason why for the proposed plantings, the arborvitae trees, that it only runs? It looked like the length of the shed and it didn't extend down or curve around or anything?
I think the idea was at that location, it would provide adequate screening, screening for the neighbors behind. If the board felt more comfortable, we could develop additional supplemental landscaping to come up onto the higher section or or flank it to the left. The Barry Greenberg is kind of known as a guy who likes to use native materials and screen the hell out of things and he felt that the the six arborvitae would do that, that we'd be more than happy to provide supplemental landscaping. If the board felt that that was a a condition that would give them a better sense of comfort.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? In that case, I will open up to questions from the audience. We have two hands raised, but I'm sure this application.
Right, I I like I said, these these two hands have been raised for a while, so hold on, now everyone's
For.
We're all right, we're start with top, which is Michael Lapari.
Yes, good evening.
Turn camera on, please.
I if I can, I'm on the other hand as well, if 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 you could be so kind as to my camera's on the CRV board A. If you would be so kind as to join both of us and I'll make sure that I use this to share my screen if necessary. And I can use my video on the other one if if that's okay.
Sure, we'll do that for you.
Sorry for the inconvenience on that.
Thank you, sorry, sorry for the for the trouble, it's the technology gets gets ahead of me.
Sir, can you just identify yourself in terms of whether you're a resident, you're representing a client, etc.
No, absolutely. My name is Michael Lapari, I'm an attorney with Mailabom Barrett. I represent Mark and Jennifer Pantoni, the owners of property located at fifty two Winthrop Road. And Michael and Marion Saffer, the owners of property located at forty eight Winthrop Road. The Pantonis and the Saffers share a rear yard lot line with the applicant. I believe Mr. Keller had indicated that these are the two property owners behind. I raised my hand earlier because I wanted to renew an objection that I had submitted to the to the board prior to the originally scheduled December meeting regarding issues with notice. So the the applicant is seeking to have a full-time accessory building devoted to a full-time office. Now, that is not permitted in the as a permitted use in the R four zone, as an accessory use in the R four zone or as a conditional use in the R four zone. And specifically, Milburn Code DRZ six zero four states that all uses that are not expressly permitted in the in this ordinance are prohibited. The New Jersey Leading Land Use Treatise authored by Mr. William Cox succinctly states that any accessory use that is not specifically permitted by ordinance can only be allowed by way of a variance pursuant to NJ SA forty colon fifty five D dash seventy subsection D, which we know is the subsection for use variance. So the applicant did not notice for that, I believe that she should have. I think the board should consider that as part of whether or not this board has jurisdiction to hear it. And I also think it's important going forward that the board needs to consider this as a devariance application and not just the bulk variances. Now, the issue or the argument was raised by Mr. Keller that somehow this is a an accessory or a common structure that's used as part of the, you know, accessory to a principal residence. I don't know of any houses in Milburn that have a full fifteen foot high office building in the back that's going to be devoted as a full-time office structure, especially not in the R four zone. So it is my argument and I would like the board to consider the fact that a use variance should be considered and as a result, the notice is improper. I also have an additional witnesses that I'm going to present in questions for the applicant, but I don't know if you want to take any time to consider my my position.
So so at this point, Mr. Lapari, your position is that the notice is improper for the simple reason that it did not notice for a use a form of a use variance under forty colon fifty five D dash seventy D one. And you believe that such a use variance is required for this application, correct?
Yes, yes, that is that is correct.
And do you have any? Do you intend to provide a witness to support that argument or you just relying on legal argument for that proposition?
For the proposition of whether or not a use variance is required, no, I'm going to rely on testimony, the testimony that's been provided, the application documents that state that this is going to be a full-time office use in an accessory structure. Because the applicant was permanently displaced from her office, so this will be a full-time office building for one person. And that is not permitted anywhere in in the R four zone as a permitted use and accessory use or as a conditional use.
Mr. Chairman, before I I provide certainly legal comments with regard to the argument that's been raised by Mr. Lapari. I think it would be appropriate if we give Mr. Verderamo an opportunity to respond and even to elicit maybe some additional testimony from Ms. Stein or Mr. Keller regarding the the issues that are being raised by Mr. Lapari pertaining to the notice and the need for a use variance.
Yeah, I I would like to respond to that, thank you. The notice that was filed clearly states that it's going to be a one-story home office space in the rear yard. So notice was given as to what the intent was. The home office is this is not, I I think counsel is is doing his best to represent his client. But he's overblowing this, this is this is, there was a shed there, they improved the shed, it's an accessory use to the home. She's simply working out there so that she doesn't have children and her mother-in-law in her ear so that she can do her job. Okay, this isn't anything unusual and if it was accommodated, if it was able to be accommodated within the house, we wouldn't be here. But it's it's a difficult situation, she does have a special needs child. The building itself isn't an eyesore in any respect based on testimony of Mr. Keller, you can't even see it from the front and you won't be able to see it from the back from Mr. Lapari's client's house. It's it could be if it was four feet away, it could be six or seven feet taller. It's the use itself isn't going to be a noxious use in any respect. But directing to specifically with regard to the notice, because we are not changing in seeking a use variance the the notice is entirely proper and I don't think that anything within the presentation calls up to this, we'd ever become a devariance. And and Mr. Keller, can you speak to this as well?
Yes, certainly. I mean, right in in Cox on seven ninety five, it's seven ninety five, section thirty eight dash one. It specifically states merely because a particular structure use is not specifically mentioned in the zoning ordinance does not necessarily mean that it is prohibited and a variance is required. And that is from various cases, including state versus PT construction, shim, etc. However, we do have a section of the ordinance that says anything that's not expressly permitted is prohibited. And that's when we go to the definition under the same section thirty eight dash one. An accessory use is usually defined as one that is incident and subordinate to the main use and is customarily so. Certainly, if we started making every person that had a home office or use their cabana or their or their man cave or their she shed as a home workspace or an office, we'd have half the town certainly since COVID would be in needing devariance relief. I think furthermore, in municipal land use law, there's an acknowledgement that the nature of accessory uses changes over time. Fifty years ago, drive-throughs were not customary to pharmacies, but now they are. And so I think certainly in this pandemic time, home offices are a necessary item to get separated from another working spouse or the children. Someday, this may be a homework space. But right now, the idea is that it's really an extension of the existing dwelling. It is not an office building, it is not, there's no plumbing, there's no bathroom. There's one single workspace or one single space within it that can be multi-use, but as indicated, it was not designed to be friendly as a cabana, it doesn't have an open air size, it doesn't have a spot for a TV to put on it. It's a it's and I think that's a benefit to the to the neighbors in that it can't be used as a cabana and a noise generator. So certainly I think that it meets the definition of an accessory use within a permitted use within the within the zone. And that's something that I think we have a a long history of even before the pandemic, but certainly in the pandemic, of these external uses becoming a home office basis.
If if I may respond.
Go ahead.
So number one, it it I missed to Mr. Verda Ramos's comments, we understand that it might be an inconvenience to have her work in the house, but that certainly doesn't get it outside of the legal parameters for requiring a a use variance when it's not permitted in in the zone as an accessory as an accessory use. To to Mr. Keller's argument that it's it's a home office, home offices are are not defined in the Milburn zoning ordinance, however, home offices are generally defined in other townships as offices that are located within the principal structure that are going to be used only for the person who lives in the home. That's not exactly what's happening here and the other argument that this is COVID, this is the new you know, the new way to find spaces and use spaces creatively for for professional use. That's also not what's occurring here, this is the complete erection of a building within the rear setback of the of the lot lines that is completely imposing upon the neighbors. that is completely imposing upon the neighbors that can now work 24 hours a day because it's a home office devoted to whatever Mrs. Stein is doing today, whatever job she may have in the future, whatever anyone else may move in, may have in the future, or whoever purchases the home may have or work in the future. Now, I know Mr. Keller said that he's worked with people who do woodworking and I think welding. I'm sure that those, those clients of his did not have a structure in the backyard in this type of a neighborhood in Milburn, New Jersey. So regardless of these arguments, it does not get them outside of the legal requirements that a use variance is required.
For clarification of the record, Mr. Keller was shaking his head in response to Mr. LaPari's comment about woodworking and welding in separate buildings in Milburn. You want to comment on that, Mr.?
Yeah, I have clients that have a welding studio in the R3 zone, which is even more restrictive, 12 feet off the property line. It's an artist studio. They do sculpting and they do metalwork. And so certainly a potential, you know, it's not uncommon. And I would also say, most towns have regulations regarding home professional offices where you have a defined profession that generally will also be on a certain prescribed amount of the floor area. It can be attributed to it, and there's a recognition, whether it's a doctor or a lawyer, that you may have guests coming to visit, clients coming to visit. This is certainly not a home professional office. This is a, an ancillary structure that will be used as, as an office space for the client. It is certainly no different than if we're on the first floor. It is not a home professional office, as I said, not an office building, no plumbing. It's, I think we're, we're, we can't look to other towns or other treatises as to how they treat it. We can only look at this town and the way it's been handled in other places within the R3 and the R4 zone for some guidance.
Mr. Verderamo, any additional comments before I give some advice to the board?
No, I think we've covered it. Thank you.
So members of the board, on behalf of a couple of the neighbors, Mr. LaPari is basically stating that the notice for this application is defective and that this application can't proceed. Certainly this evening, it would essentially have to start over based on the argument that the use that is being proposed is not permitted by the zoning ordinance of the township of Milburn and cites to the fact that a provision where if any use is not expressly permitted, it's prohibited. Well, as Mr. Keller has pointed out, and as set forth actually in the Milburn Township Ordinance and Definition Section of Accessory Use, accessory structure, certainly you do not need in every zone to specifically articulate every accessory use and accessory structure that is permitted for it to fall under the rubric of being customary incidental and subordinate, and therefore being deemed an accessory use to whatever's principal use in the, in the zone for that particular lot. Additionally, based on the testimony that has been presented by the applicant certainly so far, and we heard about the extremely limited use of the proposed structure and use of this building, I will also say to you that there's cases that talk about home occupations. And I do again believe Mr. Keller is correct in stating that just because three or four ordinances in other municipalities, whether it's Esc County or elsewhere, have definitions of home occupations or home, home uses or accessory structures for such, the fact that Milburn doesn't, does not in any way, shape, or form make those uses prohibited. Certainly, home occupations have been defined in cases, in Pell Division cases, as those uses that are customarily carried on, not only in a dwelling unit, actually in the Columbro Lebanon Township case, which is a Pell Division case from 2012, I believe. It actually states that the home occupation can be customarily carried, carried on in a dwelling unit or an accessory building by members of the family and perhaps even one or two additional persons. And in that case, it was found to be incidental to the use of the property as a residence with the, with the principal use being a residence, in fact. And then you go back to certainly the Jan Tatzik case. That's the Verona case from, I think, back in, you know, even in the 50s that really talk about the fact that home occupations are acceptable as an accessory use as long as this doesn't change the character of the residential use, the primary principal residential use to, to a business or other type of, type of use. And in fact, there's been more recent cases, whether it's the PTNL case, I think that was from 1977, Supreme Court, the Tanis case, Pell Division case from 1997, where it made clear that the applicant in those cases does not need to demonstrate that a substantial portion of a given type of principal use should be accompanied by the use. Or in other words, that the applicant doesn't necessarily have the burden to show that a majority even, or even a substantial amount of principal use residents have accessory buildings devoted to this type of home office use. And certainly, there are other cases where it was shown that even residences for a caretaker that are located above a detached garage, that was considered to be a permitted accessory use in a single-family residence. And in fact, even if you go back to the, back to the 1960s, there were cases, a New Jersey Supreme Court case actually, that talked about the fact that even a fallout shelter at the time was a permitted accessory structure in a, in a residential zone. So I think that for those reasons, and again, all we're talking about here is Mr. LaPari's contention that the notice was defective because the use is prohibited. I don't recommend that this board agrees with that proposition, sub the board to make that independent determination. But certainly, I believe that based on the testimony provided as to the proposed use, the information that's in the application materials, the case law, and the Milburn ordinance, I believe it is fair to conclude that a use variance is not required for this application.
Thank you very much, Rob. Mr. LaPari, do you have anything else you wanted to discuss?
No, not at this time. I disagree with, with counsel's argument, but I don't have anything further than what I've already stated.
Thank you very much.
So Mr. Chairman, I think that you should probably take a vote, maybe by, or deliberation and vote by the board at this time, simply based on Mr. LaPari's contention. So that, because, because if, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Was Mr. LaPari going to present witnesses?
Yes, I have questions, I have questions for the applicant. I do have a couple of witnesses as well.
Yeah, this is just a question about the use variance notice issue, that's all.
It, yeah, and I think if you, if you make.
Looks like he locked up.
Yeah.
I think you've copied that notice.
Mr. LaPari, you've frozen on us.
Yeah.
And then there's a disclose, as mentioned, that it would be used for a home office?
Okay, I can't really see it. I need my better glasses.
It does, Mr. Chairman. I could read it to you if you'd like.
Mr. LaPari, you're back on.
Yeah, a freestanding one-story home office space in the rear yard on the property.
So then I will ask the board, is everyone in favor of continuing with this case as it has been presented? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We will carry on. Mr. LaPari, would you like to bring, well, at this point, we're still asking any questions. So, so Rob, do you want to continue with Mr. LaPari, or do we want to go to the questions from the?
Well, I, so I believe the board with voice, voice vote determined that the notice was sufficient to proceed at this point. And so, Mr. LaPari, you're up for questions of, I believe, Mr. Keller.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't clear, though. If I just asked for clarification, I didn't hear Mr. Steinberg. If he, if he voted, I believe he was muted. I didn't know which way, if he voted yes or no.
I was voting to continue the hearing.
Thank you very much. Okay, great. Thank you. So, Mr. Keller, this survey that you referenced today, you didn't prepare that survey?
No, we did not.
And the person who prepared it isn't available, are they?
No, they are not.
Okay. And the person who prepared the landscaping plan, are they available tonight?
No, they are not.
How about the architect who, who prepared the, the architect?
I don't believe they are, no.
Okay, so I can't ask any of those questions to those professionals, so I'll move on. Mr. Keller, you indicated that this is an older house that the rooms or didn't allow for, for any space on the inside of the house for a home office, correct?
I, I don't know the date of the house. Obviously, it's a modern style. I don't know when it was built. I actually, I knew the prior owner, but I didn't do any work on the home. The applicant purchased it from the builder who built the house in 2019, and it is, as they said, a modern style with a lot of double-height open spaces with open spaces looking on to that central core.
Okay, but there's no unique dimensional or topographical characteristics on the property that would prevent them from complying with zoning ordinances?
No, but the, the, in the, the land use law was modified to allow for the conditions of the lawfully existing structure on the site can create a hardship when trying to develop a property in a manner that's typical with the neighborhood. So certainly, there is the house, the lot is not undersized with regard to its dimensions, and the, and the building coverage is actually slightly over what's permitted in its existing condition. And I don't know how it got that way.
Okay, that's a good question too, because I'm confused about the building coverage. The application said, and I know you didn't prepare any of the application documents, and I don't know if you're able to answer these questions because you didn't prepare the plans, but the application itself said that there was a 14% permitted building coverage and that the existing and the proposed were 16.57. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so how is the existing and the proposed the same? Is that only because they already built the shed?
Yeah, the shed was already there, so you get, that's, that's part of the building coverage already, and there's no change in that, so it didn't change anything. But I don't know, like I said, I don't know how it got to be that way.
Okay, do you know, do you know what the coverage would be if this office structure wasn't, wasn't already built on the property?
I don't, although my company did actually, we didn't do the survey, but my company did the, the area takeoffs and.
Okay, if you don't, if you don't know, you don't know. That's fine. Do you know, do you know when this shed, this so-called shed that existed before this office structure was on the property, when it was built?
We don't. I know that it was there in 2019. We tried to go back to old Google Earth, but there's too much tree coverage to, to see exactly when it arrived. And as you go back in time, the images get fuzzier, and so we could not tell. But I would, I would point out the architectural plans do show that the main space is 16 by 10, so it's 160 square feet. And then there's an eight-foot overhang by 10, so it's 80. So it's a total of 200 and, I'm sorry, 160.
I'm just asking about when, if you knew, if you knew what existed. I'm just asking if you knew when it existed.
To your prior question, it's the, the amount of coverage represents 240 square feet. The site with that shed on it is over a building coverage by 590 square feet. So even without the shed, the existing home somehow, and I'm not sure if there's a different definition of building coverage or some overhangs, things like that on the existing, on the existing house that are deeper than four feet, we were conservative and counted them as building coverage. So it could have been a number of things, but the, the existing site was over, and that's the size of the shed and pad.
Okay, so it doesn't add up to me, but to my other question. To my other question, how do you know, you said in two, you knew, you knew there was a shed there in 2019. How do you know that?
Well, we could see some evidence on Google that there was something under the trees there, and I'm really just relying on the testimony of my client. Again, we didn't do the original survey, nor did we do this survey.
Right, and those people aren't available tonight to ask that question, right?
Well, the survey, the current survey was done, the, the shed was already there. So I don't know that the surveyor would know when that shed arrived.
When you're saying the shed, when you're, I'm sorry, because it's confusing, because when you're saying the shed was already there at the time of the survey, you're saying, does that mean the, the shed shed or the office?
Well, you're right, and I should be more clear because, because there was a shed that shown on the, it's shown on the surveys being a shed, and it's my understanding that that structure was then modified, and the walls thickened and electricity was run out to it to turn it into a four-season environment. So I don't, I don't know that, and so I would have to defer to the surveyor who prepared the survey back in December of 2020.
Right, that's, that's what I would like to ask, but I can't. Mr. Keller, is there any reason why this building couldn't be built in conformance with the, the rear yard setback if it wasn't already built? If it wasn't built illegally without any permits and approvals?
No, there's no reason it couldn't have been 12 feet, 12 feet off. Unfortunately, my clients didn't get that guidance and seek that where they saw it, but they didn't get any guidance from the building department. They didn't reach out for a firm such as ours. They kind of, they saw a need and they saw the fill in. And unfortunately, they, they drew outside the lines and started to work on that project. But it could have been, there's no reason it couldn't have been 12 feet off. But as I said, the one thing about a fully conforming 12-foot structure can be as high as 18 feet.
Yes, assuming it's permitted in the zone, I suppose you're correct. However, on a lot like this, it could be a little more troublesome due to the slope, where it's a little more imposing since it's on the lot line. Isn't that correct?
There's a great differential, but there's actually not a whole lot of slope on the property, not, not a, not a significant. There's nothing that's classified as steep slopes, and then I've been on the site multiple times. So there's a great differential that was mitigated by the retaining wall that sits behind the shed, but there's not a lot of quote-unquote slope on the property.
Do you know how big the retaining wall is?
I was out there. I think we looked at the photographs. I suspect that, I'd be guessing, but I think that it's probably about two and a half feet. I could share my screen in back again and go back to photograph number three. It looks like two, two and a half feet.
Oh, if, right, I did, I asked if you knew. If you don't know, that's fine. Do you know where the HVAC unit is located or proposed to be located on this, on this plan? I know you didn't draw it.
Yeah, the, the AC unit on the architecturals was shown to be in the rear of the property. And again, the HVAC is not subject to the 12-foot setback requirement, but if the board felt more comfortable, that HVAC could be moved around to the side, and it could be 12 feet off, even though it's actually not a strict requirement. HVAC needs to be within five feet of the structure, but it doesn't need to meet the 12-foot setback. But if it gave the board a bigger comfort level, and those are generally small wall pack type units, they're, they're whisper quiet, they're fairly small, and they can be moved to the other side.
Is that the type of unit that's being depicted on the architectural plan?
Actually, I don't think they spec one out, but that's the standard for, for, for 160 square foot space. You don't need a very large HVAC unit. It's not, nothing, nothing like a residential unit. They're generally small. They sit right next to the building.
And I know you're not the architect for this plan, so how could you make conclusively that this can be relocated so easily without having an actual plan that you can review first?
Well, because it's there, the, the, the nice thing about these units is they're versatile. They can, they can be remounted on walls. And even if the unit inside was up against the inside of the wall where it's shown, the outside condenser can be a few feet away on the side. So certainly, there's flexibility in this type of system, even though I'm not the architect. We've certainly seen these type of systems on other small external buildings that are used. Uh, we've certainly seen these type of systems on other, uh, small external, uh, buildings that are used for multi-season within the community.
Mr. Lepari, do you have additional questions for Mr. Keller?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just looking through my notes. I had a bunch of questions I I anticipated to ask for the architect, uh, and the surveyor, but I I can't ask those questions because they're not available. So just give me one second while I just, uh, consult some of my notes. I know Mr. Keller got through a lot of testimony. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Keller, you you discussed installing a dry well. Uh, i- is that part of the, is that part of the application?
Uh, no, generally, uh, if this board were to approve it, because there's more than two hundred and two hundred square feet of new roof area, a grading permit would be required, and that grading permit would require stormwater management. So we would put a, uh, a gutter along the back line of the, uh, of the building, since it's sloped, so the lower side is towards your client. We put a gutter on the backside, and we direct that out into the main lawn area of the backyard and into a dry well. And so, uh, that would be, uh, that's required of any project that generates more than two hundred square feet of roof area, uh, even though we have a net reduction of close to sixteen hundred square feet of of impervious, we'd still be required to do stormwater management.
Okay, and I hear, I have it here that you you said that you're going to be improving the aesthetics by by putting trees on, uh, or some landscaping on the rear lot line. That's 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 what you were indicating was the improvement in aesthetics?
Yeah, I think that, first of all, I think that, you know, we can all debate whether you think that's a beautiful structure or not a beautiful structure, but certainly, if you can't see it, it's blocked by existing tall evergreens, and it's blocked by low evergreens, uh, to limit visibility of the property. I think that's, um, would be considered an improved aesthetic. Although I don't
I know you
don't find the building unattractive, but I certainly think if you can't see it, uh, it can't be unattractive.
I know you had some pictures of trees. Did you have any pictures of the of how it would look from the neighboring properties once they, once they're there? Because there's this large picture window, uh, you know, that would be giving off light, and and I haven't seen anything that would show that it would actually be blocked at nighttime.
Um, the, uh, the applicant would certainly be willing to put in, um, uh, a shading system along those windows. The intent is, again, not to use this at night. Um, Jackie is a full-time mom, uh, in addition to a full-time employee, um, and I suspect that she's going to operate during nor during normal business hours, and then it will go dark. Um, and the and the window is placed specifically high so that the neighbors wouldn't feel like Jackie was sitting at her desk looking at their house, even though it'll be now trees, uh, and they wouldn't be looking at them. So certainly, window treatments would be anticipated, and certainly, if the board felt more comfortable, it could be a requirement, but I I have to believe that the Steins, uh, plan or Jackie and, uh, her husband plan on putting, uh, window treatments on those windows.
I don't have any further questions for the planner. Uh, again, as he indicated, I had questions regarding the architecture and the survey, but those, uh, professionals are not available.
And thank you very much, Mr. Lepari. Um, we'll be moving on to questions from other members of the audience. Um, Mark, I think is next here.
I I think we can keep Mr. Lepari on as a courtesy.
Well, I also have some witnesses that I would like to
I understand that, I understand that.
Mark, do you want to meet yourself, please?
Sorry about that. Hello, everyone.
How are you?
Good.
So just just so we're clear, Mark is, Mark and, uh, um, uh, um, Jennifer are are my clients.
Okay, so
So I
All right, well, wait, wait, hold on a second. No, if Mark and Jennifer, and what are Mark and Jennifer's last name, Mr. Lepari?
Pantoni.
Right.
P A N T O N I.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lepari, as you are aware, and as I'm sure you've instructed your clients, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Pantoni, uh, that if there are questions for the applicant or the applicant's witnesses, it is the attorney representing uh, the neighbor that is to ask those questions. Uh, if they have questions, they are to ask the questions through you. Um, certainly, to the extent that Mark and Jen and or Jennifer, which to provide testimony, you could certainly introduce, uh, their testimony and assist them in providing such, but in terms of cross-examination, uh, they are precluded from asking questions, but you certainly could ask any questions that they want to ask.
No, I I already have. Yeah, I understand that if, uh, they're going to provide some testimony, I understand that other members of public may have questions for Mr. Keller or the applicant, Mrs. Stein. Uh, so if you want to go forward with that first, Markle and and Jennifer, we could, uh, introduce their testimony after.
Yep, we'll be, we'll use comments shortly, once we finish all the questioning. So we'll be moving then to Eileen Klein. She has her hand up. Hello, Ms. Klein, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, what what questions do you have? What questions do you have for Mr. Keller or Ms. Stein?
Well, um, my questions really aren't questions. I would like to make a cut if I may.
Okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna be moving to comments shortly, but at this point, we're only accepting questions of the applicant and and their witness.
Okay, so I make my comment later.
Yes, so we'll be, we'll be moving on from there. So, uh, Mr. Lepari, I'll throw it back to you for any comments, um, as we will move to that now from the public.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I have with me here Mr. Mark and Jennifer Pantoni. Uh, they live at the, directly behind the applicant's property, so they share a rear lot line with the applicant. Um, they would like to make some comments regarding, uh, the impact that this already-built office structure has on their property, and in addition, uh, I have some, uh, photographs to show what the structures look like from their point of view. Uh, and I had already submitted this, just for the record, I had submitted this, uh, photographs in advance of the December hearing, but I can share my screen and show them again that, uh, if, uh, the board will let me.
Let's just get some clarity here. Um, is the, are the photographs, are those taken by your clients, and they're going to introduce those photographs and discuss them?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we then, um, why don't you screen share, Mr. Lepari, if you would, and then, um, at the appropriate time, whenever that is, and we'll mark those for identification, and then you can walk your clients through them. Um, you're also gonna, we're also gonna have to have your clients get sworn.
Yes, yes. Uh, so after they get sworn, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Pantoni to say some comments, and I will then bring up the photographs.
Very good. Eric?
Yeah, uh, if both of you would just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, hold true, tell us about the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, if you're both just state your names, spell your names for the record, but one at a time.
Uh, Mark Pantoni, M A R C, last name is P A N T O N I.
And Jennifer Sanfilippo, J E N N I F E R, S A N F I L I P P O.
Go ahead with your comments.
Excellent. Um, thank you, everyone. Um, you know, I I wanted to provide our perspective of this, because it it doesn't seem to match anything that was stated so far. Um, you know, we're pretty upset. Um, you know, it has had a significant impact on our property. You know, first, I would like to say that, you know, we're upset at the fact that our neighbor did not reach out to us once to actually discuss this, right? To basically say, here's what we're thinking, how do we actually do this as a community together? This is, you know, here are our needs, just for the record, uh, you know, we are, we are all going through COVID, we are all working from home. We all have kids, many with special needs, uh, and you, when when you actually look at, um, at what, and and it's in the photos, if you actually look at what this building is, it literally changed the aesthetics of our house. We 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 purchased and moved into a house that, you know, specifically for one of the main reasons for the backyard, and there's now a miniature office building in our backyard. And just for for the record, there, in in the pictures demonstrate this, there was no shed. There was probably a slab on the ground, I suspect, uh, and the pictures pretty clearly demonstrate it. Um, and we took them throughout the year in two thousand twenty and into two thousand twenty-one. And, you know, certainly not visible exactly where this new structure is. Uh, and so, you know, again, our major concern is, um, when we purchased the property, we purchased the property because we liked the privacy of the backyard. And right now, we have an office building with a giant picture window that's going to be full of light, an HVAC unit, uh, you know, and literally to off the back of our property, I could almost touch the building. And so I, you know, it, ju- just just to give you our perspective, in in summary, every single person that has come to our house since that structure was put up literally does a double take in our backyard and says, oh, my God, what is that monstrosity? And and, you know, we truly think, but not speaking to the aesthetics of the building, by the way, um, it's a beautiful building, but speaking to the proximity of this giant building to our property. And 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 so, you know, our, one of our major concerns, aside from the fact that we feel we lose the the privacy in our backyard, which was absolutely factored into the purchase price of this home, if we go to sell the house, uh, I guarantee you that that affects our property value. And and we don't think that that's fair whatsoever. Uh, and 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 so, you know, I don't think that putting up trees, um, there are trees there now that, by the way, since the structure was built, are dying and failing. We've had a landscaper come out, come out, the landscaper says that arborvitus will not thrive there. Uh, because of the size of the structure and where the sunlight is, it's already fairly shady area before the building was built. Uh, and 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 so, um, you know, we we just want to raise our objection to it, uh, and see, you know, but we don't understand a path forward where this makes sense.
Pantoni, uh, I think now would be an appropriate time, if we can share the picture, uh, the pictures that were provided and taken by you, I'm gonna share my screen, and maybe you could just walk us through some of those.
Absolutely.
Okay, so these, uh, have been provided, but we're gonna mark these as oh-one, Mr. Lepari.
Yeah, I guess.
And and how many photos approximately are we talking about?
Uh, I don't recall. If I, give me a second, I'll undo the, um, it looks like I have fourteen, about fourteen pages.
Yeah, it's about eight.
Go ahead. So s- some have, some of might have another, uh, picture on the page, one in one picture, but it's fourteen pages.
Okay, and and these were taken by whom and when?
So the, um, the pictures, let me see if I can, I want to go to page one. The pictures have have a date on them, so they they can, uh, be referenced that way. Uh, and they were taken by, uh, the applicants, but I'll let them confirm that.
Okay.
Yes, uh, the pictures were taken by Jennifer.
Yeah.
Uh, and the dates, we try to put the dates of when they were taken at the top.
Yeah.
Uh, so I I don't know if you're on the first slide, Mr. Lepari.
I can, let me try to get there, I apologize. Um.
They're in order.
Yeah, I I I'm trying, okay, I believe this is the first page.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So this was, uh, October of two thousand twenty. Uh, I think we just kind of wanted to show, you know, I, the best point of reference, when you're looking at these photos, because we're not photographers, uh, is is that little retaining wall there, so you can kind of see from photo to photo, you know, what it looked like before to what it looks like now. So that's in October twenty twenty, I think that's when, uh, the structure was, you know, substantively built, and then the next picture. That in December twenty twenty is when the windows and, uh, you know, the remainder of the structure looked to be, you know, somewhat finished.
And and just so we're clear, this is, if you could just briefly explain, this is the, uh, the vantage point from which these pictures are taken as well, as we're going through them.
Yeah, so so this is, uh, from the back of our home. Uh, and, uh, and I think, you know, again, when when you look at what, you know, if there was a shed with those dimensions there previously, it would be crystal clear that it existed. If we're saying that it was built on the same slab, uh, you'll see, I think, in the slides that show what it looked like earlier in the year. Uh, there's, there's no building that looks like that in the backyard whatsoever. So I don't know if you can go to the next one? Maybe one more?
Well, maybe you could just tell, this is another picture, just so we're clear, from
This is, the last picture was from the left side of our yard, uh, and where you can see where the pavers are, uh, this is on the right side of our yard, kind of looking
This is looking straight towards it.
Yeah, this is looking straight towards it from our house.
So when you walk out into your backyard, this is what you see?
Exactly.
Okay.
From one side up, from the right side of our yard.
Yeah.
And this is the next picture, can you, can you, this is, this is labeled view rear, view towards rear yard twenty twenty-one. Can you tell us what this is?
So that is from our second story.
It's from our master bedroom.
From our master bedroom.
So we had a bank of windows, um, that that we purposefully took off all of the window coverings so that we could enjoy the the view and the privacy, and then after this structure was constructed, we had to put sort of shades right back up because of the the obstruction in the in the building.
And is that the 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 large picture window that faces your property?
Yes.
No, it's
Cool, definitely.
Oh, yeah, that is, but we have, it's not a picture.
And this, the next picture is view towards the rear yard twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so that's, that's just kind of showing the proximity, you know, when we first started kind of realizing what kind of structure it was, we didn't know if it was, you know, going to be a cabana or wha- whatever it was, you know, we started saying, well, there's electrical. And, you know, this is like a, like a legitimate construction site. This is a real building. This is not some, this is not a shed. Uh, this is a legitimate kind of, uh, independent building. Uh, and it, and that's the distance, to put it in perspective, when we purchased the house from a setback perspective, you can see their house in the background. There's ample space, there was just, you know, it was, uh, very picturesque, and now we stare six feet into an office building.
And and this is without the HVAC unit, which has not been installed yet, is that right?
Correct, which is supposed to go right next to where those power lines are, which would essentially take it essentially within a foot or two of the fence.
Okay. Uh, the next picture is, um, same caption, view towards rear yard twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, and I I think this is the before and after, so if you look at this one, this is very similar to the one that we looked at previously, and I hit the next one. Um, maybe it's one more, I I apologize.
Keep advancing.
Yeah, keep advancing. So you could, so you could see the, there you go, this is the one I'm looking for. This is the before and after. Uh, and so what we try to do is look at a picture, uh, from early in two thousand twenty, and then take one of the pictures from December of two thousand twenty and show the difference of what was there. That is the same exact area, you can reference the trees, there is no building there beforehand, and there is a giant structure there now. Uh, so I don't know what shed is being referenced, but I think it's disingenuous, to be perfectly honest.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, go back, go back one, please.
Yes.
On the photo on the right, on the photo on the on the left, excuse me, there's a building, the photo on the left, there's a building on the left hand, yeah, what is that building?
That's the home residence, it's the primary residence.
That is the primary residence offset to the other side of the property.
Okay, thank you.
And then the next picture is more that front view again. And you can see the resident on the left-hand side, all you see is the residence, and you can see clear to the house.
Yeah.
So you can clearly tell there's no structure there. Uh, and now that's what it looks like in that same area, uh, as of December twenty twenty. So so to be clear, it it is not only a So, so to be clear, it, it is not only a building that went up without any consultation. Uh, the, the characterization that there was a shed there beforehand is, is, uh, it's, it's tough for us to understand.
We have, uh, just, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just, just lastly, you know, at least as, as, you know, ju- just as a, as a homeowner, uh, you know, to talk about impact, I don't think I would have purchased this property with that building. And, and so to talk about its impact, you know, we fell in love with our backyard. And then, you know, that has now changed it, and frankly, we didn't hear from our neighbor once. So we're talking about impact, um, you know, well, it didn't seem like anyone cared about the impact to adjoining properties. To be, you know, just very honest.
So this is the same view just before and after, right, in the last photo?
And I think it just shows that there's, it's fairly sizable because there is a slope from our property to their property, so although it's at a certain height, frankly, you know, the trees that would be planted, but also planted at a significantly lower height than the structure of the building, even where it currently. Uh, so I don't think that, you know, it would be sufficient, and those trees that are in that picture have actually died. And I think, I, Michael, I think the rest of the photos are, are much the same.
Okay, just, just want to make sure that we go through them, this is a large windows, uh, directly facing the second floor. Uh, another picture from that same vantage point, is that correct?
It's due to the elevation of the property, those, those windows sort of sit sort of equ opposed to, to our second floor master bedroom.
Okay, and this, uh, another picture, this one's called uh, proximity to property line, this is just another indication uh, from very close to your, uh, the, the rear property line, is that correct? Yes?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I think this is where we started.
Okay, you can stop sharing your screen unless you have anything else more to show.
No, not at this time, uh, I believe that's all, Mark, unless you have anything else this time?
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I don't know if, because I, I don't have the access, if on the call is, uh, my other client, Michael Saffir?
Hey, wait, hold on a second, before we get to Mr. Saffir. Uh, Mr. Verdorama, do you have any questions, uh, for the witness, witnesses presented so far by Mr. Lapari?
Yes, just wanted to. Uh, Mr. Pantoni, uh, thank you for your, your testimony. Um, have you seen or did you see, um, during the presentation, my planner, the um, arborvitae trees that we're planning on putting in?
I did.
Okay, would, um, would you agree with me, sir, that those arborvitae's, once they're, they're planted and growing properly, that they'll completely obfuscate any view of the building from your property?
I do not whatsoever. In fact, we had an independent landscaper come in and say we could not plant arborvitae's there for lack of sunlight.
Okay, well, we've, we've, you know, that's why we have differences of opinion. Our, our landscaper, who's pretty well known up in that area, tells us that not only is, that they'll thrive there. I see Mr. Steinberg waving his hands. I appreciate what I'm saying is hearsay, sir. It's argument, in effect. Should I continue?
Any, any other questions?
Okay. Now, assuming that the, the plant, the, the planting is all to grow in properly, you, you would agree with me that you won't be able to see it from your property, right?
I do not agree with you.
It's a.
Thank you.
Highest building on a higher elevation, so I, I, I don't know as to, as to the height in which those arborvitae's would actually grow and the density of that tree line, and whether or not it would obfuscate the building, the, the building is extraordinarily large.
I direct you, um, to what would be the page four of the photographs that were introduced by Mr. Keller, which demonstrate the height that these things can get to. And I just want the board to take notice of that. So all I have for the witness, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, next, um, to Mr. Lapari, you have anything else at this current time? I don't, I don't see your other client on here, other than someone named Adam with their hand up. Okay, if there's not a Mike, if there's not a Michael Saffir or anyone with their hand up, or if he is on the phone, I'd ask that he raises his hand, but I'll let you get to your witness, and if someone else raises their hand, we can get back to it.
Very well, Ms. Klein, uh, do you have comments, uh, regarding this application? You need to unmute yourself, please.
I do, too.
You need to be sworn in also, so hang on one second, you need to be sworn in.
You need to, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
All right, like, you, your reception is, is kind of poor, I don't know if anyone else is having difficulty with it, but we'll see how we go, but just state your name and address for the record.
Eileen Klein, thirty-six Keene Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
What, what's the address, Ms. Klein?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six what?
Keen.
Thank you.
Where is your property and location to the subject's property?
Diagonally across the street.
Okay. Go ahead.
So first, you know, um, listening to uh, Mark and Jennifer, um, is a whole new perspective for me. I've known Jackie and Ronnie since they've moved into the house. And I understand where Mark and Jennifer are coming from, um, but unfortunately, Mark, um, Jackie and, and Ronnie didn't have the, the, um, wherewithal to think about the impact because of what they felt was a shed there before, and I don't know if there was or wasn't. But given the fact that there was a slab, I have to assume that there was one at some point. That being said, um, I just want to talk about Jackie and Ronnie's, um, input into the neighborhood as far as being good neighbors and really sticking up for the community. Because Jackie is in the healthcare system, she was able to help all of us get vaccinated when vaccines were very hard to get. I'm a cancer, lung cancer survivor, and I really needed to get the vaccine, and she helped me get that. Um, it's the kind of people that they are, they do things for others, you know, they, Ronnie's helped us with stuff around the house. Jackie's always available, and they're, they're just a real credit to the community and our neighborhood in particular. I have seen the structure, I never saw it before from the Pantone's perspective, and I understand what their concern is. I think that a planting screen would be suitable if you find the right um, um, trees that, that could actually make a difference. And I think that if Jackie and Ronnie plant their arborvitae, as Mr. Greenberg suggests, and I trust him as a landscape architect that worked with him before. Um, and perhaps the Pantones put some more screening on their side of the property, then I think that the solution could easily be had. Um, yes, from your perspective, the structure looks quite large and cumbersome, but I think that with enough greenery, it could be changed. If the variance of the twelve feet versus the eight feet, um, if that wasn't an issue, if it was twelve feet, you'd still have the same view, but you'd have nothing, no, you, you wouldn't be able to complain about it because it would be within the proper variance. So I think that it's a combination of hurt feelings that they never asked you, you know, was a neighbor, you know, hey, we want to do this, will it have impact on you? I don't really believe they thought it would have an impact. And I suspect that they're sorry that it does, because, you know, they're friendly neighbors and you really do want to be friends with them because they're really nice people, um, so I'm, as a neighbor, I would just hope this could be said um, from one human being to another, making both houses the homes that you want it to be. And I know Jackie works really hard, and it, it's as a mother of two, I also know what it's like for a working mom to be working at home, and it's impossible with two little babies. So, you know, I think that she should be allowed to have her privacy, and I hope that as neighbors, you could work things out to make this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Klein, um, you, um, Mr. Lapari, was it, uh, Michael Saffir, was that your other client?
Yes, uh, yes, sir, he was, uh, I believe he was, he's, uh, on the call.
All right, so let's bring him over quick since you're here, and we'll move Ms. Klein back. Adam, and then, uh, Mertz, uh, Mertzaza Shakari, we will get to you next.
Okay, Mr., uh, are, are you both going to testify?
I might add a comment, yes.
Okay, just raise, raise your right hand, both of you, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight, be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
Yes.
Uh, your names for the record and address.
Michael A. Saffir, S A F F E R, forty-eight Winthrop Road, Short Hills.
Dr. Marion Shapiro Saffir, S A F F E R, forty-eight Winthrop Road, Short Hills.
Mr. Lapari, I'm for you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Saffir, uh, just to be clear, you, you also share a rear lot line with, uh, the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're aware of the structure that's been erected on the applicant's property?
I am.
Yes.
Can you maybe make some, uh, you know, uh, provide the board with some comments, uh, and, uh, the impact that, that, that structure has on your property?
Sure, thank you, and I, I know it's getting late in the evening, I'll, I'll try to be brief. I, to give you some historical context, my wife and I moved into our home uh, that shares a, uh, a lot, uh, a property line uh, with the applicant in June of nineteen ninety-one. So we have been here, um, thirty-one years. Uh, we're very familiar with, uh, the applicant's property. Um, Ms. Lawrence asked at one point what Mr. Keller meant by beefier, and I can tell you that from nineteen ninety-one through twenty twenty, um, we never saw any kind of structure on that property.
Never.
Uh, outside of, you know, the home that was constructed there. Um, we never saw a shed, we never had anything to complain about. Um, and all of a sudden, this building goes up. Um, I, I was on the, the, the call the whole time. Um, I didn't know how to raise your hand, it shows you how technologically savvy I am. But I thought I heard Mr. Keller say that the structure can't be seen from my, uh, backyard. That's not true.
Not at all.
It's, it's very.
Can I just, can I interrupt you? You can only speak one at a time, you can't both go back and forth.
You're right.
Only one at a time, thank you.
And I apologize for that. Um, it's clearly visible, we've had guests in our backyard who have turned to us and said, what is that thing over there? And we say, well, it's either a pool house or something, they put a pool in the, the previous owners, maybe, I don't know, fifteen years ago. Um, but this, this building is, is an eyesore. I'm not saying as a standalone, uh, structure on a different property, it's ugly. What makes it the eyesore is the proximity to our lot line. Um, I'm concerned, uh, that at some point, all three of our children have been out of the house for some time. We're going to have to start thinking at some point about selling this home. And I think anybody who comes to this home is going to be turned off by seeing this structure that's so close to the property line. Um, with the lights on, I think a bad condition is going to be made worse. Um, once this structure was put up, all our trees near that structure died, uh, which made the visibility even worse. Um, I, uh, I don't have anything against the Steins, I don't, I don't know them. So this is not, you know, driven by some kind of feud. Um, I, uh, I know the Pantonies, I've been in their backyard. Those pictures depict a, a completely, in my humble opinion, unacceptable situation. Um, this, this building i- is terrible for me as, as a adjoining property owner. Uh, and I'm not their lawyer, but for the Steins, it is an absolute monstrosity. Um, and again, that's not an aesthetic comment, it's the size and the positioning of the structure. So, um, uh, I actually was not friendly or unfriendly with the applicant's predecessor. Um, I, I have not, I, I don't object, I've gotten various notices in thirty-one years from property, adjoining property owners. I'm not a professional objector. But in this instance, I felt I had to stand up because I think the impact on my property and my neighbor's property is so profound. So that's what I have to say.
And what I'd like to add is that since the structure has appeared in our backyard, all of our flowering trees and other trees that align that fence have died. On top of that, the runoff of the water that is coming down on our property since that time is so severe that it runs, uh, over our, um, brick and cement wall and stone wall, it looks like a waterfall when it's raining. And it is destroying our property because the wall is also collapsing. So we have to deal with that now. Besides the fact that we have no coverage of this building, we have hemlocks in our backyard that are extremely tall, that are serviced by Maplewood Tree Company, they are dying, and they are so tall, and they do not cover the structure from our view. So it is now a terrible eyesore for us, and also it's damaging our property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Saffir, anything else, Mr. Lapari?
No, I just have one brief comment to make before, uh, I, I, I close, um, you know, both the, the.
Wait, 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 hold on a second, Mr. Lapari, before we, before we get to any closing comments, why don't we first, um, see Mr. Verdorama, do you have any questions for, uh, uh, Mr. Dr. Saffir?
Sure.
No.
No.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend to see if there's anyone else in the public, uh, who wants to make a comment.
Do you have something, Steve, go ahead.
Just for the Saffirs, I just want to understand, please, the, the water that you now are seeing, uh, you did not see, you did not experience that kind of water cascade prior?
Nothing close, nothing close.
Okay, thank you.
Next, uh, we will bring over Adam, um, and see what he has for a comment. Adam, if you would please unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Okay, can you hear?
Yes, sir, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
If you would just state your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Adam Shanker, A D A M, S H A N K E R.
Address?
Forty-one Keene Road.
Mr. Shanker? Mr. Shanker, where's your property in relation to the subject property?
I am right next door to the right.
Okay, your comment.
So. First, I'd just like to say something about Jackie and Ron. I've lived in this house for seventeen years. We moved in two thousand and five. And, you know, when they moved in, it was really a breath of fresh air, you know, they're the kind of neighbors who you don't ever have. I've never had neighbors like them before. You know, there have been times that I've tried to walk out my door and there's a bag of bagels waiting for me, you know. I, I mentioned once when I was walking my dog to Ron that my car broke down and, you know. He came over with Jackie with jumpers in their car to start my car for me, you know, just like little things like that. They're very special. Good neighbors. And so, you know, that's why I'm here, you know, and also. Helps the conversation next door. You know, this, the shed is, you know, close to my property as well. And when they were thinking, when Ron was thinking about doing it, you know, he talked to me about it. And I said, you know, great, you know, it's, other people around my property do the same thing. I mean, my back neighbor. I guess I'm back, I'm back with the Pantones also. On one side and on the other side of my property, there's another neighbor. I don't know their names, but they put in a large structure right in my, you know. Right behind me as well, you know, and, and I just put up some trees, you know, I, you know, I put up some arborvitae's actually, and they're, they're doing well. So. You know, I'm not really sure what to say, except that, you know, this is, it's effective. I kind of understand when I hear, you know, my neighbors on Winthrop, you know, they're, they're concerned. And, you know, it's, it's like a rough. You know, kind of community situation, but honestly, from my perspective, from being right here. I think it's a beautiful shed, you know, there was a shed there before. It was, it was like just a, you know, smaller. It wasn't as tall, but it was, they, they, the other neighbor Stan. He had a woman there who did a lot of yard work. And so they kept, you know, whatever yard stuff that she, she would always like. Pruning the flowers and stuff. And I think that they just kept some stuff like that in there. It was really nothing. I don't really remember exactly. It wasn't anything you would want to look at. Like this, what they're building now is, is nice. It matches, you know, the architecture of their house. And I like it, you know, it doesn't. It probably doesn't bother me, you know, I think when, because of the hill, you know. The neighbors on Winthrop, they're looking up at it. I think it looked, might, might look bigger, you know, just because of their perspective, they're looking up, you know. And for me, I, I think it's really kind of a beautiful, modern architecture, and it goes well with the property. And I think they have a very. We all, we're all very lucky. We have very large properties. So. You know, I, I don't have a problem with it. And I think it's, it's really nice.
Thank you, Mr. Shanker. We'll be moving on to. Oh, sorry, Steve. Go ahead. Let me see.
Mr. Shanker, can you give us, do you have any recollection as to when that shed was taken down?
No, not really. The neighborhood lived there before, Ron and Jackie. I didn't want to look over there much at all. He would, he had a habit of being in his Speedo outside in his backyard because he had a nice swimming pool and he would, it was just. He wasn't the type of person that should wear a Speedo, you know, and, and I really wasn't looking at their yard much.
Can you testify that there was no shed there at the time of the construction of the building?
No, I don't know what happened with what. I know Ron talked to me about the new shed, you know, that he wanted to do. You know, he wanted to do something so that Jackie would have a place where she could work and, and, you know, the kids.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments for this? Individual? All right, thank you, Mr. Shanker. Moving on to Murtaza Shakari.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
If you, just raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your name and give your address, please, for the record.
Sure. So my name is Murthaza Shakari, M U R T A V A. And my last name is Shakari, which is S H I K A R I. And my home address is thirty three Keen Road, Short Hills, New Jersey. And I'm a right next door neighbor to Ron and Jackie.
Okay, what comments do you have for us this evening?
So, right, I just wanted to make some similar comments as, as discussed earlier. And I would completely echo the comments made by Adam and Eileen before. Firstly, we moved to this house like a year back and both Jackie and Ron have been wonderful neighbors from day one. They've been very helpful. So just in terms of the contribution to the community and neighborhood. I think they are very, very nice people and we are very happy to have them as our neighbor. Second thing is. Our house is right next to Ronnie's house and. And we have a deck which is slightly elevated. And there are these trees, which are spruce trees, and we don't have a direct view of the structure. So. Again, some of the discussion which was done earlier around the trees and, you know, the structure being an eyesore. I would say something from our personal experience that when we are at the deck, which is slightly elevated to our property. We're not able to clearly see that structure. And, and again, both Jackie and Ron and the family have been very peaceful, very quiet. We've not seen any noise or nuisance around that. And lastly, again, I don't think that is, it's an eyesore. The structure is completely hidden with the trees. It's not very obvious. So we don't have any objections being the next door neighbor.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? Doesn't look like we have anyone else with their hand raised in the audience. Well, in that case, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We will move all, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I didn't, I wanted to just make one closing comment before.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I've heard, you know, everybody testify, including the other neighbors. And, you know, again, as our, as Mr. and Mrs. Saffir and Mr. Pantone and Miss Sanfilippo had, had indicated. This is not anything personal against a neighbor. We're sure they are lovely people. And we were sure they bring great things to the neighborhood. However. That's really not the consideration on whether or not they're entitled to a variance. Now, you've seen the pictures and you've seen the negative impact that it has on my client's property. And that's really what needs to be considered when, when you're going to vote on this application. Now, both the planner and the, the neighbor have said that, well, you know, if they had just done it right the first time, it's, it's really too bad that they didn't know the rules when they first put up the shed. But that really shouldn't be something that punishes my clients and the neighbors that live behind them that have to live with this every day, just like, just like Mrs. Stein. You know, it's not their fault that she didn't follow the rules. But now, if this application goes forward and is approved, unfortunately, they have to live with the consequences. And, you know, they shouldn't have to go through the additional expense of having to plant, you know, extra trees in there you are just to block out something that's encroaching upon the, the bulk requirements. So I, I think that's very important that the board consider. And, and also with regard to the screening, I think it's also very important to note that the only testimony that was, that was actually provided regarding screening. Was through Mr. Keller, who was reading someone else's plan, who didn't appear tonight. And we have no idea what exactly is going to be put there or, or anything like that. We don't have the, the opportunity to ask them questions or about the arborvitae's, or whether or not the deer are going to eat them. And it's just going to be visible because they're going to have five feet are going to be missing. Or whether or not they can grow there. That's really the appropriate question only for the landscape architect. And, and that testimony wasn't put forth today. So there's really no credible testimony regarding any screening that the board should actually consider tonight. So, you know, with that, obviously, it is our hope that the board will, will really, truly look at the impact that it has on the neighbors and, and, you know, vote in, in that light. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopari. Mr. Verterama, anything left, less from you?
Mr. Stein.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Joe, you have something?
I just want to say that I agree with counsel. And I'm going to apologize, apparently, there's feedback coming from my laptop. I'm going to have that looked at. But I agree with counsel. This testimony was given by a non. Plant person that. They, they could plant certain type of tree there behind that structure. That would block the view of it at night. Especially the view of the lighting and of the structure itself. Frankly, I'm not prepared to vote until we get some testimony, one way or the other, as to whether arborvitae can provide. A screening and whether they will grow there. I think that's very, very important. Frankly, I agree with counsel for the objectives. The fact that the applicants are nice people, I'm sure they are. That's not the issue before this board. The issue before the board is whether or not this structure, which is illegal. And it can only be made legal by the granting of variances by this board. Whether that, though that structure can be properly screened, we don't have any test, testimony. Before us by people who are competent in that field to tell us whether or not the screening is possible. If it is, I would be inclined to vote for the variances to grant the variances. If it's not, if the trees will not grow there and screening will not be available, I'd be inclined to vote. Not to grab the variances. But I am absolutely clear. That we need testimony as to whether or not that screening can occur. So that's basically where I come out on this case.
Okay, thank you.
I'm ready to move on again.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to that point?
Sure, why not?
If, if the, if the board would feel more comfortable and feel that we need to supplement the record with testimony from the landscape architect. I, I would request the board table the matter and allow us to come back with that testimony. So you'll have a.
Eileen, what do you have as the next meeting date?
It would also be very helpful if we had testimony about the negative impact that the structure has had on the objectors' property as well.
And if the objectors are going to be presenting that kind of testimony by way of an engineering report, I'll send a letter of representation to counsel so that we can coordinate some discovery prior to the next hearing.
Mr. Verterama, there's no discovery in these land use proceedings.
On that point, if, if this is to be carried and additional professionals are going to testify, then I would just like to reserve the right to call my own professionals. To rebut that additional testimony that you're going to allow at a future hearing.
That's your prerogative.
Certainly can.
My next available meeting is April four.
April fourth, gentlemen, ladies, okay?
I'm not, I'm not here on April fourth. If you need my testimony. Rich Keller.
April eighteenth. I mean, my March, the March agendas are both booked.
I actually am in Summit that night.
Mr. Verterama, do we need Mr. Keller's testimony, given that he's already provided testimony and has been subject to cross examination?
I, I don't, I, I prefer to have him there, but if he can't be there, I also want to get this resolved for my clients as soon as possible. So I, I, I think Mr. Keller's put more than enough evidence into the record already through his testimony.
You want to go say April four? Would you prefer that earlier in the day?
Let's go with the fourth and I'll see I can possibly, I may be able to phone in. I'm not sure. I, I'll, I'll be heli skiing. I'm not sure if I'll have access to internet, but I might.
And Mr. Keller, you understand that if you, if you phone in, you know, if you're going to be providing any type of sworn supplemental testimony, we have to be able to see it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware.
Okay, then we will carry this matter until the fourth of April.
Could we get an extension of time from the applicant?
Mr. Verterama?
Can we do April? I'm not available on April the fourth.
So the April the eighteenth.
Wait, but wait, one second. I'm just checking. I may be confusing myself. April four is fine.
Okay.
April four. So there'll be no further notice, Eileen?
Correct.
Then this matter will be carried. Sorry, go ahead, Rob.
No, I'm sorry, Craig. Just to, just to clarify that the, the carry of this matter without any further notice to April fourth will, will again be on the Zoom platform. And that you should check the agenda in terms of link to, to log in and provide other information.
And could we just get an extension of time till the end of April, just so that we're covered? For this application.
Mr. Verterama?
Yes. Stipulate.
Very well. See you on the fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. See, I see a hand raised in the audience.
Yeah, I don't know.
LP, but if it's regarding that case we just saw, that case will be heard again on the fourth. Of April. Richard, why is Keller got his hand up? You're going to bring that over quick. Eileen?
What's that?
You want to bring LP over quick?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just take a look what that is.
It's not coming over. I don't know whether he's not. It is. I don't know what's going on.
Hand is down. Okay.
You're here. Hold on. Okay, no, I thought maybe he was.
All right, so it happens. And again, LP is. Next up, we have calendar thirty eight zero zero dash twenty one, four thirty seven, four thirty nine Melbourne Avenue, seven Bodwell Terrace, the High Center.
All right.
For all interested parties. Over all interested parties.
I guess Mr. Keller, I thought Mr. Montzefama was.
Do you folks hear me?
Hi, Mr. Levine, how are you?
Uh, just wanted to say, how are you this evening?
Super. Um, John McDonough, is he with you also or no?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's just really slow coming over today. I don't know why. Rich, did Rich get over?
Not yet.
Yeah, it's just really.
Who else do you have? Mr. Levine brought over.
Um, we should have the president of the congregation. We've got our architect. We've got our engineer and our planner, although we certainly are not hopeful that we'll get through all of those folks. But those are those are all people that are with us.
Yeah.
Okay, that um, can you, so when am I bringing over?
I think initially, if you could bring John McDonough over.
He's there.
Okay.
Rich keeps disappearing. I just brought him over, but now.
Who's your engineer if 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 Keller's not your engineer?
Mike Longzefama.
Yeah, I don't see.
I didn't see him in there.
Here, that's why I thought maybe Rich was doing it.
No.
Uh, we got Danny, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And are you seeing Itai?
Itai, yes.
Where is Dan?
Uh, Dan's up top. His hand raised.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so Dan.
Joe, could you read for us, please?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Hold on. Okay, I I'm just getting a text. Mike is he's wrapping up in another town. He'll be, he'll join us um. In about 15 minutes. So as soon as I see him pop in, I'll bring him over.
Are you good to start, Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Okay.
And so just for the record, my name is Michael Levine. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild and I'm here this evening on behalf of the High Center for Living Judaism. Um, as was mentioned, the subject property consists of of three separate lots currently 437 to 439 Milburn Avenue. As well as 7 Bodwell Terrace, it's Block 1208, Lots 1, 2, and 13 on the tax maps in Milburn. Um, the property currently contains two existing residential dwellings. Uh, the proposal before you is to demolish both of those existing residences and construct in their place a single house of worship on the property. Would also have associated onsite parking, landscaping, stormwater improvements and other related um. Improvements. Uh, this is a conditionally permitted use in the R6 zone, although there are certain conditions on that conditional use that we don't comply with. So we do need a D3 conditional use variance. There are also, excuse me, some bulk variances. Uh, and design waivers, and we are also seeking simultaneously preliminary. On site plan approval. Um, there is an initial matter that should be addressed kind of as a threshold issue. And that is, as you've seen in the application materials that we submitted. Um, there have been prior decisions rendered by this board um in connection with um this property and a proposed house. Can I just interrupt you for a second? Joe, can you just mute your yourself?
I'm trying to find it. Well, as long as I can't find it, I have a statement I'd like to make before we begin this too. I want to be clear. I want everybody to be clear that I was the chair of this board. When the same applicant came before this board about. I would say eight to 10 years ago. For seeking uh a similar set of variances. For a pro for two properties on a square. One of them on the corner of Short Hills Road and Jefferson and a house next door on Jefferson. Uh, that matter was took close to two years uh before this board. And ultimately, it was denied. There was a significant amount of litigation that occurred. Especially to that decision by this on board. It did not, I'm not, I was not on the board. I want this to be clear. I was not on the board for the application that occurred. From the 1994 to 2001 or 2002. That dealt with the property on Milburn Avenue. But I was a chair of this board on the application that dealt with the properties on Jefferson. So I want this, Mr. Levine, to be very clear about this. Um, and you can take whatever action you think is correct. On behalf of your client or no action. But I was, I just wanted to be clear that I have a long history of almost two years. With this applicant seeking to move that synagogue from Milburn Avenue up to Jefferson.
I was also on that time with.
Pardon me?
I was on the board with you at that time, Joe.
I I'm sorry. I didn't realize, Mr. Topper, that you were on the board at that time. I know you're an Alzheimer with this board. I didn't know you were that old.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Levine, these are the cast of characters that you have uh on this board now. So are you comfortable proceeding with that?
Yes, Mr. Sumner, I thank you for that, Mr. Topper, as well. Um, with regard to the uh separate application at at a separate property. Thank you for uh disclosing that on the record, but we are prepared to proceed with this board.
Thank you very much. As you were saying.
I was saying there was kind of an initial threshold matter that we should probably address first, which is, as was alluded to by Mr. Steinberg. It's not the most recent application and the most recent application was about 10 years ago at a different location. But as you can tell from the application materials that we submitted, in order to be deemed complete, we did include copies of prior resolutions with regard to the. The property that is the subject of the application before you this evening. Uh, and it was also um. Zoned R6 at that time. Houses of worship were also conditionally permitted uses at that time. Um, so uh, and that application was denied. So whenever that's the case, there's always the potential issue for race judicato or a a thing decided. And there's a policy against kind of reexamining um the same application multiple times, just in in an effort to provide finality to to the board's decision. Race judicata does not apply, however, if there are significantly changed circumstances or or significant differences in the application that's being brought before the board. And certainly, we feel that there are significant differences um in in what we're proposing and how we're we're seeking to develop a a house of worship on this property. Which many of which can be discerned simply by comparing the prior, the board's prior resolution with the application that's for you. But in order to kind of address that initial matter and and hopefully put it aside, we thought it would be appropriate to uh get Mr. McDonough. Sworn and just to provide some of the handful of significant differences that that we feel enables this board to go forward and consider the substance of this new application.
So.
Go ahead, Rob.
So thank you and thank you, Mr. Levine, for uh for bringing that up. Um, I just, before Mr. McDonough provides some testimony. I just wanted to take a moment, uh, not to belabor the point, but rather just to give the board uh just some some background. Just to even supplement what Mr. Levine was saying in terms of this issue of of rest judicata. Um, and you've heard me mention it in various contexts with other applications. Um, I I will tell you that I do believe that whether that doctrine is applicable. Um, has been determined by the courts to be a decision that can be made certainly by a board of adjustment in the first instance here. And of course, as Mr. Levine alluded to, you know, the question is whether the same parties or their predecessors that previously sought the same relief. From, in this case, the Board of Adjustment in the same factual setting. And if in fact this board made that determination, the case could conceivably be dismissed on the grounds that it has already been decided. Now, um, with regard to rest judicata, and I've mentioned this with regard to other applications, there's certain elements that a board would need to find. To determine that rest judicata does apply and preclude the second application. Um, first, that the second application is substantially similar to the first, as Mr. Levine commented on. That the same parties or those that they're in privity to are involved and that there's no substantial change either in the application itself. Or in the conditions surrounding the property. Um, there's also must have been adjudication on the merits in the first case, which there was apparently according to Mr. Levine. And both applications involve the same race or or basis, subject matter. Um, I will also tell you that there are cases that stand for the proposition that where greater relief is requested in the second application, it can be barred. Uh, by by rest judicatus. In other words, if the application were denied. Um, there's a case where I think it was um a business use. And then they came back with actually a bigger business use. Uh, the court uh determined that because there was, you know, three times the amount of floor space compared to the prior application. And there was going to be uh more parking and and other features. Um, the court found that rest judicata did apply. Now, of course, where a second application seeks relief that's uh different. And of lesser proportion than the first application, then rest judicata presumably would would not be applicable. So these determinations are made on on a case by case basis. Um, and and certainly it is appropriate for the board to hear some testimony, whether it's Mr. McDonough or Mr. McDonough and maybe some other testimony. Uh, before making a determination uh with regard to uh this issue. But I agree with Mr. Levine. I think it's an important issue uh to be dealt with upfront, or at least to be raised upfront. So the applicant uh i- is aware that based on the 1994 and 2001. Uh, applications that there there could be a claim here. And so I I agree, it's better that we deal with it now.
Mr. Levine, if Mr. McDonough would like to speak, since it's already 10:09 and we do have 45 people attending this, which is a rather significant amount. Um, and we would like to allow for questioning and so forth, he will most likely be who we get to tonight. Unless his testimony is incredibly short, but um and later the time and and to give proper time for questioning. Um, as for the audience and those listening, we will not be doing comments until the end. So if there are questions for each of the professionals, then feel free to ask those, but as for comments, we will wait till the end and where testimony is finished. So, Mr. Levine, the floor is yours. Actually, okay, we just had a hand up, mouth down. So, Mr. Levine, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yes, John, we'll need to get you sworn in.
Hey, do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give tonight to be the truth, whole truth, kind of the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is John McDonough. It's spelled M C, capital D O N O U G H.
Great. And your qualifications, sir?
I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a member of the American Institute Certified Planners. That's a national certification. Uh, both are current and in good standing, and I've testified in front of this board and been accepted as a witness before.
Thank you. Your qualifications are accepted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, John, certainly you are familiar with the application that's uh before the board this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And are you also familiar with the application that was submitted and decided by the board back in the 2001, 2002 timeframe?
I am.
And um, could you uh review what in your view could be considered significant or substantial differences in the nature of the two applications?
Sure, there's really, I think, three core. Um, reasons why the board can find that there are substantially changed circumstances between the prior application. That was denied back in the early 2000s and that the current application before the board. Number one is the statutory test has changed. Um, in 2005, we had a new case come out known as the House of Fire case with, which dealt with. Exactly the issue before the board now. Back in 2005, we had a use, uh, religious land use that was both a conditionally permitted use. And an inherently beneficial use. And the board, the court was confronted with the challenge. Which statutory test applies? We have one test for inherently beneficial. That's the SICA test. We have another test that applies for uh conditional use relief. That's the Coventry Square test. Back in 2000, uh, the board went down the Coventry Square test, the the test for D3 relief. In 2005, subsequent to that, again, the statutory tests change. The court said, when you're confronted with the issue of conditional use versus inherently beneficial use. You always go down the path of inherently beneficial, which is a more relaxed test, a more simplified test, the way Mr. Cox talks about it in his handbook. Is that is is a simplified test whereby the positive criteria are automatically satisfied. It's not the applicant's burden to prove that this is a a good land use. It is a a top tier land use uh that gives this application strong weight. Along with hospitals, along with schools, religious land use are uh land uses are uh considered inherently beneficial. So I think right off the bat, number one is the board can certainly uh give deference to the fact that. Nowhere in that 2001 resolution, nowhere in the 1990 resolution uh where uh this application was heard. Uh, same lots, same land use, um, but different statutory test uh was applied. So nowhere do I see the word SICA in in either one of those uh resolutions. So I think the board can certainly rehear this application based on the statutory test and and applying, I'll call it a a fresh standard of proof. And we also know that in those early 2000s, we had on the federal level, uh, these Ralupa statutes that came out that were um. I'm paraphrasing here, intended to eliminate barriers to religious practice uh without a compelling governmental interest. I'm not saying that it gives religious land use a free pass by any stretch, but I will offer that on on a federal level. There are some protections up there that I don't think we're we're back there back when this application was vetted last time. That's number one is 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 the legal test. I'm not the lawyer, but certainly when I plan, I I consider now towards House of Fire as opposed to Coventry Square. Number two, and you'll hear this as the testimony evolves, that there were factual distinctions. Between this application and the one that the board heard back in, again, the early 2000s. We're dealing with the same lots here uh in Block 1201, Lots Number One, Lots Number Two, and Lots Number Three. Uh, which is a corner lot that is presently developed with two dwellings. I can offer photos as we, if we we do start to go further, but the condition of the property. Basically the same as it was back in in the early 2000s. A key difference factually is back then, one of the dwellings were coming down. One of the dwellings were staying up and being retrofit uh for this religious practice. So we were dealing with a retrofit back in the early 2000s, and now we have a complete knockdown of both structures and a completely new building. A a completely new construction on this particular piece of property. So I think, again, factually, the form of development has changed. And additionally, the the nature of the operation has has changed as well as as you'll hear as we go through the testimony. Bear in mind, that building back in 2000 was supposed to be for dual use. It had a residential use within it. It also had a religious use within it. Now we're only looking at religious use within the building. And then finally.
John, if I may, is it typically uh the case that as a matter of zoning and and land use planning? it's typically, in most cases, particularly in residential zones, discouraged to have two principal uses on the same lot?
That's correct. Dual use is disfavored. And that's no longer the case here. And then finally, I think there's a time factor here as well. We can certainly look at changed circumstances and I don't want to overstate what we've all been through within the last two years and the the behavioral aspects that have changed. And we're all we're all here on a Zoom meeting remotely. Religious practice has gone that way as well. And who would have thought five years ago or twenty years ago, when this application was heard, that there would be such a thing as as remote worship? And that, I think, lessens the load, lessens the parking demand that may have been confronted with this application back in in two thousand. So whenever we look at an application and raise Judicata, we always consider the passage of time. We're twenty years removed from when this application was was heard. Twenty years of this applicant looking for an alternate site, which has not been found. And again, the fact that th- there is a longstanding time differential between what was going on back in the early two thousands and now, particularly with respect to COVID and and the behavioral shift, if you will, for some people wanting to remotely worship. We can certainly get into the factual changes, but I think that's something that as the application evolves, as you hear from our engineer, the positioning of the building, the way the site will flow, function and operate, we can get into those details. But I think that, Mr. Chairman, in in my view, is I'll say the triangle of of core reasons why I think this application should should not be heard or barred on the grounds of race Judicata, and the the board should look at this application with fresh eyes.
Thank you for that. Are you on the board, any questions for this? This witness? Rob, any thoughts?
Yeah, so you know, Mr. McDonough raised, you know, three issues. And I know, you know, this is not to preclude certainly the applicant from getting into other issues that go to the criteria that I set forth for you just a few minutes ago. He talks about that the the legal test had, you know, quote unquote, changed based on the House of Fire case. And I I just don't know, and I'd be curious as we get into this application, whether the applicant is taking the position that a arguable change in the law, and I say arguable, but because I don't, you know, it's hard from looking at the two thousand and one resolution, what particularly was considered by the board without looking at that underlying application and the accompanying plans. But I don't know whether one of the criteria is whether there's been a change in the law for an application that would otherwise be exactly the same. Not that this one's necessarily exactly the same, but if you had two applications that were exactly the same. And the only difference is that the second application was brought twenty years later, and there's been a a change in the law or a new case came out. I don't know if that necessarily in and of itself wins the day. With regard to the factual distinctions, Mr. McDonough did talk about the fact that, you know, this is going to be just a house of worship versus a residential and and religious use. I don't believe that there was, at least in the resolution, to my recollection, any discussion about a variance being required for this application for having two principal uses on the same lot. In fact, I recall that actually two principal structures on the same lot was was an issue in that the applicant back in two thousand and one decided to knock down, I guess, one of the structures to eliminate that particular variant. So I don't know if that was really necessarily in play, although certainly there's a in in one, there was religious and residential, and this one is just a a religious use. And then the third, Mr. McDonough talks about changed circumstances. And again, I I'm not sure, frankly, at least in my understanding of the law, for the benefit of the applicant, whether changed circumstances, you know, talk about things like COVID or changed circumstances under the case law, or changed circumstances in the neighborhood, how the neighborhood has changed over a period of time that may, or or the uses in that particular neighborhood that may lead a board to determine that things are different now, and we need to look at the application a little bit differently. I will tell you that there's other issues that, you know, I know in the interest of time, Mr. McDonough just, you know, briefly went over them, that may lead you in one direction or another with regard to Restudicata, either for it or or against it based on the particular facts. I mean, my recommendation, at least at this point, Mr. Chairman, is for the applicant to continue with its case, certainly. And that in the course of the presentation by the applicant's various witnesses, if they can hit on, you know, some of these issues that, you know, we've been talking about, you know, whether it's substantial change in the application itself, whether there's a substantial change in the conditions surrounding the property. And and I believe that that, you know, certainly will be beneficial to to the board. But I don't I don't think we're we're quite there yet, frankly, from a legal perspective, for the board to be in a position to make a call one way or another, you know, simply based on the application materials, including the the nineteen ninety-four and two thousand and one resolution and the the current application materials.
Understood. Then we'll proceed. I I would like to bring over Jack Gordon. Keep raising his hand over and over again. And there's a question for this witness or what's going on there. Mr. Gordon, if you would be so kind to turn on your camera.
I would.
How are you, sir? Do you have a question for this applicant?
I do. I just really want to focus on the issue of collateral estoppel and raise Judicata for a second. But let me first introduce myself. My name is Jack Gordon, G O R D O N. I am at twenty-seven Bodwell, up the road from the applicant's property and property under contract. And I, before I ask any questions, want to say thank you to the zoning board. I have served on the planning board in Roseland for more than twenty years. And I understand the significant commitment that volunteers make in their communities. And I would hope that you would consider the notion of raised Judicata and collateral estoppel in connection with this third application. Mr. Simon, I respect you greatly. And I think you've handled the two prior applications, and I have sat in on a couple of earlier meetings as well, exceptionally professionally. And for that, I extend my thanks as well. But this is not a case that should be heard for the third time. In nineteen ninety-four, not the zoning board, but the planning board heard an application brought by Samuel Bogomyski to merge four thirty-seven and four thirty-nine Milburn Ave. And the conclusion of the planning board at that time was it was inconsistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. The second application, the one that we talked about a couple of times, was in two thousand and one. There were six hearings, fourteen hours of volunteer time spent in connection with an application that is identical in every material respect to this application. And after hours and hours and hours of testimony, the zoning board of adjustment for the borough of Milburn determined that the property, and I'm quoting, the property cannot sustain the proposed use. That's in finding five point four. This is before your board. The zoning board found that there was inadequate buffering. They found, and I'm quoting, there was inadequate parking. They found that the proposal as presented constituted, quote, "a substantial detrimental impact to the public good." That's finding five point five. In addition, this same board, you're all different people, but it's the same board. Twenty years I spent on the board, but it's the same board. They found that permitting a house of worship in a residential zone on a point eight five acre lot would represent, and I'm quoting, "a substantial impairment of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance because of the minimum lot size of three acres." Why are we doing this again? Why, I I didn't hear anything from Mr. McDonough that suggested that any of these things have changed. You're still talking about combining three lots, putting a point eight five acre lot of land and putting a house of worship on it. A lot of towns have a complete bar. And Mr. Simon will explain this to you, a complete bar on putting any house of worship in a residential zone. Milburn takes, I guess you could call it a middle ground. They say, "Okay, we can have a worse, a house of worship in a residential area just so long as there's at least three acres." There's not three acres. There's not even one. It's point eight five. They're looking for so many absurd variances that they looked for back in two thousand and one that this same board said no to. On February fifteen, two thousand and two, a hundred spots, you need a hundred parking spots. They're proposing twenty-five. Not acceptable. This application was heard for five nights and was denied. And now they're coming back and they're saying, "Oh, well, we have COVID now. Maybe people will prey on Zoom." Poppycock. You've decided this, you as a board, not everybody in this room. You have decided this. It is stare decisis. It is law of the case. It is done. It's raised Judicata. Don't waste our time again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ju- just brief, I did want, for purposes of the record, to to clarify one misstatement there. We had submitted revised plans prior to Thanksgiving of last year, correcting the calculation of the floor area and the proposed new building. And as is noted in the updated Board Planners Consulting Memo, under the ordinance, the required number of parking spaces is fifty-two. It is not a hundred. So I just wanted to correct that for purposes of our record. And also just to kind of reiterate what Mr. Simon had said earlier, and I I thank him for acknowledging the fact that Mr. McDonough, you know, given the the hour and trying to kind of give an a brief overview of a of an initial question, highlighted three I aspects of the application, which in his view, made it substantially different. If the board is allows the more detailed factual testimony from our witnesses to come out, as he alluded to, there are a number of other significant factual differences in the way this site's being laid out. The number of parking spaces being provided on site is substantially increased over what was proposed previously. Also, there was no prior testimony as to ways that any additional parking needs could be addressed by virtue of of using off-site resources or off-site partnerships. In fact, the Board Planner's Review Memo encourages the applicant to to consider those those possibilities. The applicant has done that and is prepared to discuss those those efforts. There was no testimony before the board with regard to that twenty years ago. That's an an important aspect of the ordinance that we are seeking variance relief with respect to. Also, the testimony will show that the prior application had substantially taller and more impactful retaining walls that were proposed and were proposed much closer to, excuse me, to the closest residential property line. That is not the case with this application. So there are a number of of significant differences that will become clear as we go forward. We're in a situation where, you know, we're kind of in order to try to address adequately the race Judicata issue, we're almost being forced to kind of put the the cart before the horse, as it were. But I just want the board to be mindful of what both Mr. McDonough and Mr. Simon alluded to with regard to there's there's much more to be highlighted here to emphasize the differences between the two applications.
I think, Mr. Levine, with regard to, and you know, you heard, whether it's Mr., you know, Gordon's comments, my comments, even your own comments, I think it would be, as you proceed at this point, whether it's now and or at a future meeting, I think you hear fairly loud and clear that I think will be helpful to the board in assessing this Restudicata collateral estoppel issue that the applicant certainly in describing the differences through their witness or witnesses actually not just rely on the the resolution from, you know, the prior resolutions, but also show those plans that were considered by the board back in, let's say, two thousand and one, two thousand and two. You know, in terms of the elevations, in terms of the the layout. I think that that would be instructive to the board in terms of the the substantial change issue. And also, of course, you know, through Mr. McDonough ultimately, you know, if there's any changes to the neighborhood, you know, that goes to to those issues.
Well, certainly, we have the personnel on our team and the the resources to be able to make those demonstrations. We have access to that information. So that's certainly something that we can do if given the opportunity to to move forward.
We do have several people in the audience, Rob, that would like to speak at this point. Are we opening this up? Or how are we?
I I I think that certainly, since we're talking about the Restudicata issue, I think it's fair to, you know, to open it up. Just one, two other quick comments, just just on that issue, of course, Craig. Two other comments. Number one is that in that for Restudicata, an applicant cannot come back with essentially the same application, but presented better. So, you know, the law says that you can't just show show up with, you know, much better witnesses, you know, much better exhibits, and that that will constitute a substantial change to to a- avoid the doctrine being utilized to basically not allow an application to go forward. You know, the other issue is that what the board found in nineteen ninety-four or two thousand and one, in terms of, you know, its its findings of fact and conclusions of law, is less relevant in Restudicata to what actually is less relevant in res judicata to what actually was presented the first time by way of the application and plans versus what is being presented currently. So let's keep that in mind.
We will bring over Simon B.
Craig, while we're doing that, and I apologize, I just would need to make a clarification. I was not on the board for the 2001 case. I was on the board for the Jefferson Old Short Hills case.
Thanks, Steve. Simon, if you would, please turn on your camera and unmute yourself.
I'm Simon Basuk.
And your address, sir?
436 Melbourne Avenue, just across the Melbourne Avenue from that proposal synagogue.
Okay, we are currently discussing res judicata collateral estoppel. I would like you to keep your comments to that. And in light of Mr. Gordon's testimony already, I would not want to get repetitive. So, you know, feel free to speak, but I would like to keep it concise and on point.
I'll be short.
Wait, does it have to be sworn?
Yes, at this point, you should.
Okay, just raise your right hand. You swear from testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold truth, know the truth?
I do.
Just state your name again, spelling it, and your address for the record.
Simon, S M O N Basuk, B A S Y U K, 436 Melbourne Avenue.
Please proceed.
Yes, I just a short notice about Mr. McDonough mentioning that this time, due to COVID, the situation is changed because of remote worshiping. And I think Mr. McDonough is supposed to know that that religion exists for several thousand years. And even Orthodox Jew can't turn on the light, but the smartphones and computers are much more sophisticated devices. So that shouldn't be taken into consideration. That's it.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we will bring over Priti.
Sorry?
Thank you very much for your testimony. We're going to put you back into the audience.
I'm done. I have a lot of things to say because my home is closest. I'll be affected more than others people.
And you will have due of due time to do so, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you. If you would please unmute yourself. And if you have a comment, we're going to need to swear you in. So please raise your right hand.
You swear from testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold truth, know the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your name, and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Priti Goswami. My last name spells as G O S W A M I. I live at 24 Botwell Terrace, New Jersey, Melbourne, New York.
Ms. Goswami, as I stated earlier, we're discussing collateral estoppel and res judicata. So please keep your comments to what was said by Mr. McDonough along with that topic.
Sure. So, thank you, Jack. You did a great job. I can't thank you enough. One thing I would like to add to the whole thing is we have 20-plus kids, children, living on the street.
Once again, if this does not pertain to the comments that were said by Mr. McDonough or collateral estoppel, res judicata, we're not going to get into that side of the testimony tonight.
So my main concern is the safety of our children on the street.
Okay, we will get, we will get, we will get to that at that time. Currently, this evening, we are not to that point. So I appreciate you coming by. When we get to that, we can bring you back over. Next up, we have Yassir and Mathias. Folks, for all you attendees that would like to speak this evening, your comments must be directed as questions to Mr. McDonough or strictly to res judicata collateral estoppel. We're not getting into other type of testimony this evening or comments regarding neighborhood or those type of things. Please keep that in mind when you come in front of us.
Just, why don't you just raise your right hand? Do you swear from testimony you're about to give tonight to be the truth, hold truth, know the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, the record, spelling your name, please.
Sure. My first name is Yassir, last name is Mathias. I M T I A Z, and I live on 9 Botwell, just next to this applicant's proposed site. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. I don't know about this fancy legal term you are using. So just as a layman, I would say that Mr. Simon put it very nicely. Just putting it nicely, the same thing, the same old story is not going to help to this neighborhood. I will be the most affected, just like this gentleman from 436 Street said. And I'm very thankful to the Jack. He put it very nicely. I'm just wasting a lot of time. You have already wasted a lot of time. I'm just sitting on this hearing for the fourth-